Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for waiting so patiently. There are a number of issues in which we had to work on. That's why it took us a little bit. We're waiting for Councilmember Hume, and here he is. So, we are reconvening from closed session. One item to report by a vote of four, zero. With Councilmember Nguyen being absent, the City Council authorized and directed the city attorney to defend the case of Mohammed versus City of Elk Grove, case number three, four, dash, two, zero, one, eight, dash, zero, zero, two, three, four, two, five, seven. And, that being the case, I want to adjourn the closed session, or the special meeting, at six forty-four. I want to call the regular council meeting to order on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, at six forty-four P.M. And, Mr. Clerk, if you could.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel fourteen on Friday, June twenty-ninth, at one P.M. And Sunday, July first, at nine A.M. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person, so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular notice agenda item as it may deem necessary. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which are the blue cards that can be found at the back of the room and provide to the deputy city clerk prior to consideration of the item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And, if you could roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Nguyen is absent. Councilmember Dietrich.
Here.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suon.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
I am here. And, for the pledge of allegiance, I'd like to ask Mr. Garcia to select one of his students to lead some pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you very much. At the beginning of every regular City Council meeting, the City Council would like to invite members of the public to join us in a moment of silence, so if you could, please. Thank you very much. We have an agenda in front of us, but before I ask for a motion, I wanted to acknowledge and ask the City Council if it pleases the council, I'd like to adjourn this meeting today in honor of the Long Beach firefighter, Captain Dave Rosa, who lost his life after responding to an emergency. Now, the connection to Elk Grove is our local firefighters had the opportunities to serve with the Long Beach firefighter department while they were serving down there, responding to some of the emergencies in the state of California. So, gentlemen, is that fine?
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
All right. Thank you. And, we have an agenda in front of us.
So moved, second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? And, next item.
We have no items under the closed session of Section Three, which will take us to Section Four, our presentations and announcements, starting with item four point one, which is the civic summer introductions.
All right, come on up, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you for the friendly welcome, all of you.
Good evening. My name's Jared Estes. I'm going to be a senior at Franklin High School. I stand here today to represent the Elk Grove Civic Summer Youth Program. A little about it, it's kind of basically a two-week class and then a three-week internship in which you're placed somewhere. So, for me, I've always been interested in history and government, so it's something that I knew I wanted to do. And when I signed up, I've been placed into the California Energy Commission, which kind of investigates better usage of our state's resources. But, more importantly, kind of, I think this program kind of gives our citizens, especially the youth in my generation, sort of a way to exercise their voice, because, as people probably know, many of us are very opinionated, but we may not know how to actually act upon that. And so, I'd like to thank both the continued support of Elk Grove City Council and the mayor for this program. So, I hope you enjoy our presentation, and thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Rachel Floreska, and I'm an incoming senior at Pleasant Grove High School. Within interest of studying business, I joined the program in hopes of understanding how the local government affects our community. And after hearing from our local representatives, I learned of their responsibilities and how they give back to our community. I learned also that no matter what occupation you decide, the local government will always impact everyone's lives. I will be interning for CSD in marketing and communications, and thank you for your support for the Elk Grove Civic Summer Center.
Greetings. I'm Trenteang, a senior at Franklin High School. The Elk Grove Civic Summer Program has been an enlightening experience for me, an experience in which I enjoyed a variety of presentations, be it on city management, local government issues, or ambitions of Elk Grove. I will be an intern at the building department, which inspects proposals based on safety standards and other policies, and subsequently issues permits. Thank you for your support of our program.
Hello, my name is Ayesha Hara. I'm a junior at Laguna Creek High School. This summer, I'm in the Elk Grove Civic Summer Program, which has been a significant experience for me so far. I appreciate this program for giving high school students the opportunity to learn more about our local government and community. For my internship, I will be working with chicks in crisis, an organization for pregnant teens, and young women that are in need of help. I'm excited to meet new people and assist others that are in crisis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Simranjeet Bajwa, and I'm fifteen years old. I attend Elk Grove High School, and I will be a junior for the next school year. I really appreciate the Civic Summer Program for informing us about my community and my people. For my internship, I'll be working with Para Transit Incorporated. I am excited that this experience will give me a chance to meet new people, build strong relationships, and assist individuals with disabilities. Thank you so much for your time, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Awesome. Thank you. Mr. Garcia, did you want to say anything?
We just want to thank you again for your support, and also...
Come on up, so we can hear you.
Yeah, let's give him a applause.
Just want to thank everybody for their support, for coming in, for speaking to the students. Been a great program so far. We're almost to the end of the classroom portion. The students will be going out on their internships, starting July ninth. So, for everybody that was able to take on an intern, we really appreciate that. And, we're looking forward to next year already, so for anybody in the audience who has a student who's going to be a junior or a senior in the following school year and wants to be involved in the program, we're up on the EGUSD website for more information. So, just get ahold of us, and we look forward to continuing the program in the future. Thank you, Council.
Thank you for your continued efforts on this.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Every year, you know, I really look forward to this program, and it's really refreshing to see young people who are interested in public service. So, thank you to each and every one of you. Yeah, appreciate it.
And congratulate all of you for taking time out of your summertime when everybody else is playing.
Right.
You guys are in here getting some valuable education that'll not only, in the short term, but long-term successes of your life. And, thank you two gentlemen for championing for these guys, and thank our city team for helping put all this together. It's an awesome program, and I wish all you guys the best of luck, and look forward to... Hopefully, you guys will come back and tell us your success stories.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you.
Great.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you much. All right, next item.
Take us to Section Five, Public Comment.
Of a comment. Our first speaker is Ed Owen. Mr. Owen, come on up. Following Ed is Mark Graham.
Hey, Ed.
Hi. Mayor, City Council Members, Vice Mayor Hume, I mean, Suon, excuse me. So, I got three minutes. First of all, I thought we would be discussing the revisions to the speed bump ordinances where the number of cars possibly be reduced from the five hundred cars that required before you could make application. But, that has been tabled, and I think we'll be at another meeting. So, since I'm here, I wanted to talk about fire danger. We recently had a fire behind Hoag's House, which is adjacent to mine, and it almost broke loose. So, it started on the house off of Sleepy Hollow. Fire Department did a great job. They got in there, got it out before it hit the eucalyptus grove. So, concerned about the ditch that's kind of been going on for some time. It's all overgrown with a lot of dry grass, and I'd like to see if somebody could come in and clean that before another fire happens. And, now, to the real issue. I recently read an article in Elk Grove Citizen that two of our council members were meeting with a private developer to propose, possibly propose, a lifestyle center. Now, I know that we were talking about the fountains in Roseville, and also Santana Row in San Jose. And, what I read was that it was being proposed for Elk Grove Boulevard. Now, why would anyone, with all the traffic that's going to be impacted with Costco, all the things going up and down Elk Grove Boulevard, have we abandoned the southeast policy area as an area to develop? We've got ingress, egress off the freeway. You've got all the properties around, sitting there. Nothing is happening. And, we have the new cross-country, cross-town expressway going in, and I just tell you guys, and I'll tell you, Vice Mayor Suon, and Mr. Hume, it was in your article, why would you guys even propose that, when we need to get the traffic off of Elk Grove Boulevard and get something going in the southeast policy area? So, I don't know who your developer is, but private developer, and this is election time, so I think we'd better start being a little more transparent, because this sounds to me like another developer come in to tell us what to do in Elk Grove. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Our next speaker is Mark Graham.
Excuse me?
Thank you, sir.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Mark Graham, and following Mr. Mark Graham is Eugene Evans.
I just want to note that Mr. Graham submitted a PowerPoint presentation to accompany his comments. It was received in accordance with the city policy for submitted PowerPoints.
I can't tell if it's okay. I'm sorry.
I think we got you there.
Is it up there? I can't see it. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Graham, and I live in Elk Grove. An agreement is being created between the city and AT&amp;T at the company's request, and you, the council, are not involved. The council needs to exercise some leadership on this issue. This is a terrible agreement proposed by AT&amp;T. I encourage you all to read it. I emailed it to you today and on May thirtieth. There are only two questions here. First question, is it appropriate for this city attorney to make policy or to make agreements for the city? Answer, no. Reason, he is not elected. Second question, can the city attorney read the council's mind? Answer, no. Reason, attorneys are not trained to read the council's mind. It is not a requirement for admission to the bar. He is an attorney, not a psychic. You are treating him as if he were a psychic. Don't let the city attorney run the council. It doesn't matter how smart he is, or how good an attorney he is. That's not proper. That's not his role. Sure. The council's role is to make policy and to make agreements for the city. The best way to do that is for the council to be involved in the making of a policy or an agreement from the start. If you sit by and let this happen with your eyes closed, and you finally open your eyes at the last second, when the agreement is on the agenda for a vote, at best, you'll be in a position to catch mistakes. The mistakes will be, A, that you did not want an agreement with AT&amp;T on cell antenna installations, or B, that you did not want the agreement that the city attorney guessed and assumed that you wanted. Right now, the city attorney has twenty-three pages of terms and conditions proposed from AT&amp;T, which is this, and not one word of guidance from the council. This is not the proper way for the city to make policy. Why would you assume that the best way is for you to hear no evil and see no evil? The council needs to put this on the agenda for a discussion, and to receive a staff report and community input. Based on that, the council needs to give direction to the city attorney as to whether you want an agreement in the first place on cell antenna installations, and assuming you do, what should be in it and what should not. Receiving community input before directing the city attorney is really important. Otherwise, he may make it his priority to give AT&amp;T what it wants. It has happened in many cities. You haven't told him that, but you haven't told him not to. AT&amp;T gave him direction, and you did not. What I think is that the council and the city attorney should make it your priority to give the residents of Elk Grove what they want. Councilmember Suon, I appreciate that you replied to my email. You said that the council would not consider a code amendment without an accompanying agreement. But, the cover letter, which is dated January third, that AT&amp;T sent to accompany their application for a code amendment, does not even mention a proposed agreement, and they had delivered the proposed agreement to Bob Murdock on August twentieth of last year, five months prior. And, the other thing is, staff told me that you do not need an agreement in order to have a code amendment. Please put this on the agenda for the upcoming council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Eugene Evans.
Hello, City Council. My name is Eugene Evans. I live at fifty-five oh eight Gold Poppy Way, and my comments are a little bit closer to home. I would really like to have a complaint, as I need to have heard, about Officer Badgley ninety, Kwan. March, I'm at June the fourth, and he filed this, and a notice, and this notice borders very close to harassment. Now, I have lived at this area that I'm living in now, for over six years, know all my neighbors except one that just moved there, and so that makes me kind of want to say, he may have been the one, since they won't tell you who the person is, and you don't get an option of seeing the person who filed a complaint against you. He's the only one that I can think, may have filed it, and he's the one that really, I didn't want to bring up too much, because he's the one that I think that needs to have something to file against. I've not had roaches the entire time that I've been in this area, until now, and I'm cleaning my garage to make sure that I can keep them coming into my house. They're not in the house, but I did find some in the garage, because they have that little pitch under the doorway that they can get in, and they also have the vents. So, I've been working with that to try and keep that done right, and I know all of my neighbors, like I said, my next-door neighbor, and which is sad, because I would have thought he would have been the one that would do something like that, but he hasn't done it. This guy will go out there and itch his lawn with scissors, you know, and we're close. We get all my neighbors, we know each other, the exception of this new one. And, I say, I won't mention that to him, but that's one of the things, is what I'm doing. And, what really gets to me is, this notice, they said that the complaint was filed, and he gave me this notice. Now, this notice has all three of the boxes marked, three out of four, and I have practically new Mercedes-Benz. This guy says that thing had spider webs all over it, and that it was a, what else does it say? Spider webs, come like was spider webs, and that had been on the street over seventy-two hours, and that the registration was out of this area. Had that police officer, Mr. Kwan, come to my house, I worked with the code enforcement in East Fallow Auto, I'm not violent or anything like that, he would have gotten every bit of information that he needed, had he done that. Now, naturally, he's not going to try to do everybody, but if you can take the time to write something like that, you can certainly take the time to stop by and knock on that side of the road and what was happening. That car certainly didn't have a residence here, because that was my son's car. My son had just passed away two days before, and left that car with us. So, it had not been there in the three days, because we had just gotten it. And, I'm saying, that's why it borders to me on harassment. Why would you come and do or say something like that? And, I have every right that every other citizen has to clean my garage. I have a three-car garage. I was cleaning that so I could put that car heels in the front of that garage. That's the reason that was all out there. And, so, I would have thought that would have been the reason that they would have called him rather than to kill me about my car. And, I think that this officer needs to have some sort of training as to how to do this. That's not the first thing to do. I used to be over city, over a code enforcement in East Fallow Auto. That was not our first thing to do, because we knew we had better, what was best to those council persons. You don't want the public to start bucking everything you're doing and saying. You don't want that. And, that's the first thing I thought of, was, no, I'm not going to do this. I'm going to City Council. I'm not going to reject this, and I'm going to continue doing what I'm doing, cleaning my garage, which I did, and got that taken care of. But, I think that this officer, and any others that are doing such code enforcement and work on the street, of course supervisor did come by, and he said, I don't see anything wrong with your car, Mr. Seven, now, so I think you've already taken care of that. Well, that car is the same weight as it was when I pulled up. We did not clean that car. It was, it just is dirty, in fact, dirtier than it was when they, this officer here came and signed that, saying that cobwebs were all over and dirty.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. If you can wrap it up, please.
Thank you. I really wanted to have this agenda, so that I wouldn't be standing here for it. Three minutes really is not enough to do this issue, but thank you very much.
Hey, Mr. Evans, I, you know, I'm real sorry for the loss of your son. Did you want to say something, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Evans, you know, I'm also sorry for the loss of your son, but I just wanted to explain that I believe the notice is a courtesy notice. I don't believe the officer understood how recent events came, so if it seemed like it was something that was rushed to judgment, we have a standard protocol. I understand you have experience in Palo Alto in our city. It's just a little bit different. And, so, the courtesy notice is only a courtesy, and it is not a fine or anything against you, and so I just wanted you to be aware of that. So, it is a courtesy notice.
I know, and just so you know, a lot of our things that we did was based off of being a new citizen, such that they were, was based off of things that were done here in Sacramento. So, I know a lot about Sacramento issues and what they do. Should have, if they know you don't knock on every door, but it would not have been any thoughts of anything that I have said.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, sir. Yeah, thank you. Our next speaker is Frank Freino.
Good evening. I, again, as well as Ed there, thought today we're going to talk about our speed bumps on our roadways. Unfortunately, we're not, so I figured I'd use this time to address that, as far as our road goes, and what I see happening in the city. And, I'd like you guys, if you could, put some thought into what we're becoming here, the city of Elk Grove. As we continue to grow and evolve as a city, I think we need to keep the human aspect and the community aspect to decisions and the way we move forward, in decisions that we make on behalf of the citizenry, and the way the city moves forward. This issue with the speed bumps has been going on far too long. This is a decision that council could simply, I know you've been out to my streets, so you understand, that there are mitigating facts and factors that should be considered when making these decisions, as they come to the city council, or be a request from the city, or to the city, by the citizenry, to have these items looked at and addressed. There shouldn't really be, in my opinion, a whole bunch of bureaucratic nonsense going on, as far as looking at regulations, looking at codes, looking at this, that, and the other thing. You guys are smart. I've met all of you, okay? You guys have common sense. We, as a city, need to maintain our common sense. We need speed bumps on that doggone road. I've got two children that like to go out and ride their bikes, go on runs, et cetera, et cetera. It's been a while since I've paced a vehicle, or estimated their speed professionally. Yesterday, I watched a vehicle, a contractor, fly down our road, doing at least fifty-five miles an hour, okay? We don't have any posted speed limit, which you can enforce on our road. So, people are going to drive however they want, okay? If a vehicle traveling at that rate of speed, or above twenty-five miles an hour, for that matter, hits somebody on that road, it's not going to be a good thing. This is something we need to move on quickly, and, you know, with some real purpose, okay? And, I appreciate the efforts that you guys have made, as far as this goes, thus far, but, like I said, I don't think we need to really spend a lot of time evaluating, well, this is our car count, well, this is how long your road is, et cetera, et cetera. This road is in itself a very narrow road, and we use it to walk, run, and enjoy. And, I believe the city should move quickly and get these speed bumps installed, okay? Because, if anybody gets hurt, just one person, it's too much, okay? And, I want to thank you three, Dietrich and the mayor, and Suon, for coming out and addressing the other issue. I'm pleased that we're moving forward, and hopefully reaching a resolution. I don't want to use more of my time. And, I want to mix the two issues. So, please do the speed bumps.
Thank you, Mr. Freino. Seeing that there are no additional speakers sign up to speak, let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section Six, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have a few items to discuss. First is, happy birthday to the city. This Sunday, the city turns eighteen. City was incorporated back in two thousand. It's actually been a community much longer since back in the eighteen-fifties, but we celebrate city's incorporation this Sunday.
Finally, an adult.
What's that?
Finally, an adult.
Right. We're legal.
Want to sing "Happy Birthday"? I know that we were joking about that earlier.
That earlier today. Next week is our annual Red, White, and Blue Festival for the Fourth of July, with a variety of different festivities, starting at four o'clock, where the exhibits open, and food, and so forth. We have the Ride, the Freedom, Let Freedom Ride Bike and Stroller Parade, and Pioneering Contest at five-thirty. We have the opening ceremonies at seven, and then the fireworks show start at nine-forty, and then in between, we've got some live entertainment. So, come on out. We appreciate all of our sponsors, and there's more details and information on the city's website. I wanted to note, the SB one repeal measure has qualified for the ballot, and that would repeal the gas tax increase that was adopted recently. And, so, there's going to be more information that's going to come out about that, but statewide, it would impact about five thousand different local road and bridge safety transportation improvement projects. But statewide, it would impact about five thousand different local road and bridge safety transportation improvement projects. In Elk Grove, that funding is used for roadway rehabilitation, pavement repair, transit operations, improvement mobility, bike lanes, et cetera. So we're gonna continue to monitor that and let the council know what that local impact is gonna be in greater detail. Should that pass.
The I-5 HOV lane is that, that is also funded by SB one funds.
Yes. Yep, there's.
And the bike trail that's coming down Franklin Boulevard.
Yep, absolutely. A little bit of good news, our Sheldon and Bradshaw advanced funding we told the council about before. Four point one million dollars we expected on that project for the feds to give us. We had to, to do some internal borrowing to make that work, but we expected to receive the funds in 2020. Last week, staff successfully worked with Caltrans to secure those federal funds. By maximizing the use of these funds, staff saved almost two hundred thousand dollars in local funding. So again, using those federal and state dollars really helps our money go much further in these kinds of projects. July one, new service with Republics starts, which means new services for the public. It includes an on-call bulky waste pickup three times a year for all residents to be able to utilize the disposal of batteries. Just leave a little baggie on the top of your recycling cart and then they'll be picked up by Republic as well as new options for sharps, needles, and auto injector disposal. So you can contact Republic for more information. Another big item is the task force is gonna start beginning patrols for illegal fireworks. And this is a zero tolerance policy with the city of Elk Grove this year. The task force, police, code enforcement, others are gonna be out in force monitoring that and violators could be cited and fined up to fifty thousand dollars. So if you see illegal fireworks, please report that at nine-one-six-seven-one-four-five-one-one-five. Road closure continues at Bradshaw and Sheldon and the city will observe Independence Day next week on July fourth. Going to the standing citywide initiative projects. The Trail Nature Area Project is going to be presented to the City Council for this evening for further direction and moving forward in that design process. Consultants and staff presented the information regarding the Library and Performing Arts Center at the Arts Commission last night. That'll be coming to the City Council on August twenty-second. We had a stakeholder meeting regarding the Sheldon area Grantline Road improvements last week. It was decided to do some further design study alternatives, including roundabout options for that Sheldon section. So it seemed to be that that option was received favorably by the group as far as at least further exploring that. And so we'll be doing that and then looking for potential grant opportunities to continue to move that work forward. And then finally, the multi-sports park complex, the Sphere of Influence Amendment. The city's been working on the draft environmental impact report will be released on Friday. So public comments are open and be able to receive through August first. Information on the city's website as well as a variety of other opportunities to get that document reviewed. And comments again are due August first. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Any questions? There are no questions. Thank you, sir. All right, next item.
Take us to Section Seven, Council Comments, Reports, and Future Agenda Items.
Okay, Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, mayor. I have quite a few things that I participated in. First is following the last council meeting, had the meeting in the Sacramento Transportation Authority. Most of the meeting was devoted to discussing the formulaic allocation of SB one funds and what Elk Grove's share of that would be. After much deliberation, we settled on a breakdown that's substantially similar to the current Measure A allocation of seventy percent going towards roads and thirty percent going towards transit. However, all of that will be moot if SB one gets repealed in November. The next day, participated in putting together a survey for a transportation listening tour that a subset of the STA board will be participating in where we go out and discuss transportation priorities with various people in the county, throughout the county that are interested or stakeholders and find out where their priorities lie. Had a paratransit meeting Monday. Nothing of report with respect to Elk Grove except to say that EG Act, which is the Adult Community Training, is now the recipient of a brand-new CNG bus via paratransit. So that's exciting. The Construction Careers Ad Hoc Committee had a meeting with staff and with some of the stakeholders and started working out potential language and/or direction. The vice mayor and I toured a mutual housing apartment project in Davis as a part of our affordability committee duties to see sort of a different model of providing affordable housing. The folks that were here earlier, they spoke before the Elk Grove Civic Summer Class and then participated in the meeting that the interim city manager just mentioned with respect to Grantline Sheldon Roads with the Sheldon Community Association, City of Elk Grove staff and Capital Southeast Connector JPA staff. Then had a Capital Southeast Connector meeting the following morning. And basically, we were talking about how we fared in our different grant applications and where we fell short and what our next strategy is going to be. Went out for the start of the Run for Hunger. Had a meeting earlier today with staff from the San Joaquin Joint Powers Authority as well as RT to further explore the idea of co-locating a passenger rail station with the Franklin Light Rail Station. If we can get the sanitation district on board, it looks like things are moving in a good direction there. So that's exciting. And then this afternoon, had a diversity ad hoc committee meeting and got preliminary results back from the data gathering that was done with respect to the diversity in the workforce of Elk Grove. I would say generally, the news was good. As with all things, there was room for improvement, but there was, I think, both with the morale and the attitude within the city and city employees was that we are doing a good job. There is room for improvement, as I said. The numbers bore out that things are pretty well within reason. We, you know, if we missed a mark, we missed it by one employee, which is tough to kind of make those kinds of numbers. But particularly, they were impressed with the situation over at the police department. So I want to commend Chief Noblet on that. So that will be coming at the August twenty-second. Council meeting will be the report out on that, those efforts. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Soon.
Thank you, mayor. As Councilman Hume mentioned, attended STA, RSTA, Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. Dropped in on the CST, Elk Grove has talent over at Laguna Town Hall. Really neat to see our residents out there showcasing their skills. I had opportunity to give some dresses from a company called Five Little Dresses. They make dresses for schoolchildren, kindergarten age. So they, before they go into first grade, it was quite a treat to see these little girls and their families have this new attire to get ready for first grade and to deliver, was able to deliver those dresses to those families. So Councilmember, Councilmember Hume mentioned the tour of New Harmony in Davis. Also with Councilmembers Hume, Wynn, and Sedmond Cooper's office, we hosted, with California Women Lead, hosted the governor's appointment secretary, Mona Pascal Rogers, here in the council chambers about government appointments for, mostly for women, but men too. I've been just talking to the, to women about leadership roles and their ability to go after appointments with the governor's office. Attended Secog where we talked about Blueprint, which is the overall land use planning strategy for the entire Secog region and the supporting transportation planning, planning efforts to support that and the challenges of complying with the blueprint. Things like, how do we, how do we do range of housing in certain areas, comply with greenhouse gas emissions, those kinds of things? And given the building construction and building requirements, we have to also abide by. Attended a meeting with the Glenbrook HOA Board with Councilmember Wynn to hear about their concerns in the Glenbrook community. Also participated in the Run for Hunger. And then last night, attended the ceremony for Uplift Elk Grove, which is a new nonprofit aimed at improving the lives of families and individuals to get them out of the cycle of poverty. So for many folks, car breaks down, maybe you call a friend or family member to come take you to work. Folks that are living on the edge, they don't have that support system. So a car breaks down, they don't get to work and maybe they get let go from their job. And that, you know, obviously that spirals into a whole different world. So this is a new organization aimed at teaching folks to be resilient and other skill sets for them to do better in life. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Dietrich.
Thank you, mayor. First, I have a question for Darren. Some of our previous conversations, if you have an update on what the potential plans are for process improvements in planning and building department with getting feedback from the, our clients that we, either some type of a survey or something that you may be working on, because I think that'd be important to all of us on where we're headed.
Yes, Councilmember Dietrich, we are working on a questionnaire in a postcard type of form to go out with each applicant. In addition to that, we, for our internet users and email users, we want to be able to utilize Survey Monkey or some type of survey that somebody can do online. And right now, I'm processing those questions and want to try to keep it simple. As you know, sometimes surveys, if they get too long, they lose the message. So what we're trying to do is formulate the questions where it gets us a good base point to start from as well as get an idea of how we are satisfying or, you know, providing that customer service in the Development Service Department.
Perfect. And I look forward to seeing that as that progresses because I think that's just continual process improvement will just make us better and better at what we do.
And we're continuously looking at our processes as far as how we can get approvals in and out of the door in a quality manner, but also in a streamlined manner.
Okay, another question for Bob. On kind of the combination questions from Frank Freeno and Ed Owens relative to the concerns with the drainage and fire and the speed bumps. Do you have any updates on work that we're doing out there relative to any abatement or cleaning those drains out and everything? And the second part is, do we have any updated status on speed bumps? And I think one thing needs to be, if you can go into some detail on what agencies actually have to buy into the agreement on speed bumps.
Sure. Well, let me take the speed bumps first. Yeah, we, we as staff have been looking at bringing changes forward in the traffic calming program. Just when they were adopted a number of years ago, really, it's very difficult to qualify to get speed bumps on the street. And so we thought we'd bring forward some suggested changes. And I think Mecca Road's a good example where I think there's a need, but they don't qualify based on a requirement for a certain number of vehicles per day. And so our recommendation that'll be brought forward would be, among a number of things, would be just to delete that requirement and let us look at each individual case and see if it works. Now, in the case of the Fire Department, we always go to the Fire Department and if a road is what they define as a response route, emergency response route, we, those roads aren't allowed to have speed bumps on them because they'll delay the response. So for a road to qualify for speed bumps, it must be on a route that the, that the Fire Department doesn't need for response. So we'll be bringing that forward. We had been working with another individual on Mecca Road and I guess the message got a little lost in translation that we had delayed this because I wanted to go back through the recommended changes to make sure they're in line with what we've discussed. In fact, I have a version of it with me now that I've been reviewing. So as far as abatement, we're out. Our crews are out all the time, doing weed control, clearing ditches, removing anything that might be what we can perceive as a fire hazard. So we're on that. If people have information or have seen something they want us to take a look at, we'd love to hear about it. Just, you can email me or call and we'll get out there as soon as we can.
Do we have a date for the speed bumps coming back?
I'm trying to get it on next council's agenda. We were trying to shoot for this one, but I don't think, we couldn't quite make that. And so we're trying to get it on the next agenda.
Thank you, Bob. So that's all my questions now for, I was not here at the last meeting, so I did have a couple probably overlapping things that I've been involved with, with the other council members. But one of the big ones for me that I personally like to talk about is tomorrow, we'll have our annual budget meeting for the Sacramento Cable Commission that I sit on. And that's one of the few commissions that we have, someone has an opportunity to sit on from our council where we actually bring money back into the city. Most of them are takeaways. This one usually nets us over a million dollars. So I chair that committee and I'll be looking forward to that tomorrow. And I think when I read the agenda, we're somewhere around one point two million is what we're forecasting. So that's a great one to bring on. Had an opportunity to go to the Musical Mayhem production of Once in an Island. The Musical Mayhem is a local production company that works with the young men and women of our community. And one of the things I like the most that they do is they also take on kids with disabilities. And to see these young kids with disabilities intermixed with the able-bodied kids, it's a win-win for all of them. And they do just such a fantastic job with their singing, acting, and dancing. And I was talking to one of the moms afterwards and she said, you know, my, my son was always rather quiet and reserved. And now he's, gets up in front of his class, is very confident in his public speaking and very much like the young men and women who were in here earlier today and what we talk about with our youth commission. These are opportunities that are priceless for where these kids will take them, not only in high school, but college and in their professional career. So I know we rearranged our budget this year and reallocated some money for Musical Mayhem. So I think it's a fantastic investment. And if I recall, it was Councilman Hume that recommended that, you know, we, we don't always reward the kids or people that do the right thing. A lot of times, we're always trying to look for the people that are struggling in some manner. And this is kids that are really trying on their own and folks that really try the kids on the right track. So I think that's a real great thing that we're able to do and recognize that. I also had a chance to speak with the young men and women from Summer City Hall. That's one of my favorite events to see these kids learning about civics. I was joined by the city team at the annual Camden Neighborhood Association meeting and had an opportunity to give them an update on the state of the city. And many of our team members, including our interim city manager, Jason, did a fantastic job. I believe from my recollections, first time I've seen a city manager get up and, not only just attend, but get up and speak at one of the neighborhood associations. And I really know how much that meant to the, to that organization from having our top executive from the city to be there as well as the chief and many of the other members of the, Bob was there as well. Thank you. Thank all of you for joining me there that night. I know Sharon Anderson and the entire Camden Association really, really appreciate that. And then the last one I'm sure you guys talked about was the last meeting was the Bounty on the Boulevard's inaugural event. And, you know, what a huge hit. No, Pat, you're intimately involved from the original founding members of the foundation and then what that money's able to drive into the scholarship program. And can you refresh my memory, how many scholarships you were able to give out last year?
Last year was one hundred and seventy-six scholarships for two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
That's phenomenal. And I think, what did, you guys net about fifty thousand dollars between ticket sales, profit, and the auctioneering?
For the Bounty on the Boulevard?
Yes.
Yeah, that's about right. We don't have all the figures in, but that's about right.
That's fantastic.
And the greatest thing was inaugural event, limited to just over three hundred people and it was sold out about two months prior to the event.
Yeah.
Those were a hundred and fifty-dollar tickets too, right?
And it was interesting from my perspective, it was a totally different type of venue on our plaza. And it was, it was pretty cool because for any of you who weren't there, it was a huge tent. And the way they set it up with smaller tents on the west side, it created shade and opportunity for hors d'oeuvres and cocktails beforehand. And then a huge, basically, not a circus tent, but it was a big tent. but it was a big tent. And had everybody inside there. Could've used a little air conditioning that day, but it was, it was a great event. That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Before I give my report, I want to thank Bob for preparing that one cheater on some of the things that the city is doing to mitigate traffic. I know that with my visit to different constituent groups, they've always asked, hey, what are you guys doing with traffic in the city of Elk Grove? So that was very useful. And it sounds like a lot of people are excited about the efforts that we're actually putting forward. So thank you for preparing that, and thank you for your team and the hard work. Let me see. Had a number of events, but the couple of ones I want to highlight is the Round for Hunger and how important that is for our food bank. A number of the council member did attend with me. But what we saw is, you know, a number of supporters that continue to support the food bank. Now, I know that there, there was a concern by some of the runners that it seems a little bit smaller than some of the other years in which we, I guess we had had it on the day of the Fourth of July. Is that correct, Chief? And there were some concerns about traffic and scaling that back. And in the process of changing to a different date, it seems like we've lost a number of the runners. So that was, you know, something that was cited. And I don't know what sort of efforts that we might want to do so that one day, there'll be 5,000 runners, because the food bank plays such an important role in the community. And, you know, I would love to have a side conversation about that possibility with you, Chief. Let me see. Summer in the city with the students, I think every one of us spoke there. And it certainly was a very inspirational event to have young people have an interest in public service. Had an opportunity to speak at UC Davis commencement ceremony, which again was very inspirational for myself, seeing the concentration of high EQ individuals out in the audience was pretty profound. Had the Greatest Economic Council meeting. Have air quality tomorrow, and sanitation today has been canceled. And that is all. And next item, then.
Take us to Section 8, Consent Calendar Items.
Okay. We have a consent calendar in front of us.
Move consent.
I'll second, but I'd just like to make comments on 8.8 and 8.9. 8.8 is in relation to the contract with Miller Law Group for the diversity audit that's being extended. It doesn't affect the actual time that it'll come back to council, so we're still on schedule for that. It's just internal consistencies. And the second one on the next item, 8.9, there was a lot of praise for NeoGov and what NeoGov is able to do with tracking our HR and our employees. And so I just, I absolutely emphatically support item 8.9.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. And just for the record, there, want to open public comment and close, being that there's no members of the public sign up to speak. And all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Next item.
Take us to Section 9, our public hearings, starting with item 9.1, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting an addendum to Certified Environmental Impact Report for the Southeast Policy Area Strategic Plan involving text changes to the EIR and previously adopted mitigation monitoring reporting program.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, members of the City Council. Antonio Ablog, Planning Manager, here to present to you the Southeast Policy Area Strategic Plan EIR Addendum. With this project, the applicant is requesting to amend the previously certified EIR and adopted mitigation monitoring plan for the SEPA project area. Specifically, the requested text changes would modify mitigation measure 5.4.7D. That text is amended as shown on your screen before you. That states, "Projects applicants shall mitigate for the loss of Swinson's Hawk foraging habitat at a ratio of 1 to 1 by implementing either Option 1 or Option 2 listed below, consistent with the Elk Grove Municipal Code. Alternatively, if the Habitat Conservation Plan is implemented, future projects may participate in that plan in lieu of this mitigation if the Habitat Conservation Plan meets the standards set forth herein." And now I'll go into those two options that the addendum would make available for developers within the SEPA plan area. Option 1, this is how the existing mitigation plan reads. This is per our existing code, Section 16.130.040. "Project applicant shall acquire conservation easements or other instruments to preserve suitable foraging habitat for Swinson's Hawk as determined by California Department of Fish and Game, who are now California Department of Fish and Wildlife. The location of the mitigation partial shall be acceptable to the city and California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and that amount of land to be preserved should be at a 1 to 1 ratio." What the addendum does is pursuant to our Elk Grove Municipal Code, Section 16.130.110 was the existing code section, it reserves for City Council the ability to consider or approve other means of mitigating for significant impacts of Swinson's Hawk foraging habitat for reasons that are permitted by CEQA. This would allow the Susa Dairy-related projects and subsequent development projects in the SEPA area to provide alternative forms of foraging habitat mitigation that also meet the intent of mitigating for habitat at the 1 to 1 ratio. For projects utilizing this section for their mitigation, this section does not require a suitability determination from California Department of Fish and Wildlife for such mitigations of impacts of Swinson's Hawk foraging habitat. As far as the project area, in 2014, the city adopted and approved the Southeast Area Policy Plan. It consists of approximately 1,200 acres at the southeast area of the city and includes residential, commercial, and office and employment-generating land uses. A closer view of that project is shown here. For the Susa Dairy-related projects, those comprise approximately 927 acres of the 1,200-acre SEPA area. With the first Susa Dairy-related project approved, I believe, in 2015, that approved 375 acres for residential development at various densities within the SEPA plan area. For the mitigation option that's proposed by the applicant, they are proposing a mitigation bank at the Van Vleek Ranch. That ranch is located approximately 18 miles northeast of Elk Grove. The overall ranch area consists of 4,700 acres of grasslands, oak woodlands, pastures, hayfields, and irrigated croplands, including alfalfa fields. Of that total, Van Vleek Ranch, the proposal proposes 895 acres to be preserved as a mitigation option for SEPA-related projects and projects related to the Susa Dairy project. As far as an overview of where that Van Vleek Ranch is located relative to the project site, that's up on the map before you, the property is located just to the south of Jackson Highway, Highway 16, close to Rancho Murieta in the eastern portion of Sacramento County. As far as staff's analysis, we believe this mitigation option is supportable based on the proposal included with the addendum and the augmentation of the site that goes along with that proposal. The 895 acres proposed to be reserved for the mitigation bank is located adjacent to 775 acres of the Westerveld Mitigation Bank, and will result in the preservation of a contiguous intact 1,670-acre preserve. Furthermore, those two mitigation banks are in close proximity to areas of the Cusmanus Reserve Preserve and the Deer Creek Preserve, which total over, I believe, 50,000 acres across the whole county. The proposed preserve is also adjacent to approximately 300 acres of irrigated pastures that have been and are in the process of being preserved. And a lot of those irrigated pastures represent habitat for the Swinson's Hawk species. In addition to preserving the land, the applicant proposes to augment that preservation area in a number of ways to help further the longevity of the Swinson's Hawk species. Those include range management methods to control vegetation height. That allows the hawks easier access to the prey that they need to survive and nest. The conversion of 50 acres of the existing preserved lands to alfalfa crops, which the alfalfa fields provide high-quality habitat for foraging. Furthermore, they would plant 20 additional cottonwood saplings in addition to the 31 acres of existing cottonwood groves on the Van Vleek Ranch to support nesting sites for the Swinson Hawks. In accordance with our Chapter 16.130.040, which is our standard mitigation for Swinson's Hawk, the applicant did consult with California Department of Fish and Wildlife on this proposal. Based on the location of Van Vleek Ranch, which is 18 miles from the project site, they felt that it was not a biologically supportable distance, as CDFW's standard practice is to recommend mitigation within 10 miles of the project site. I know there's been some discussion about what really the 10 miles means regarding, related to Elk Grove City Code and CDFW practice. As far as Elk Grove City Code, the 10 miles is really a threshold for where mitigation starts to begin. If your project site is located within 10 miles of a nest, you must mitigate for Swinson's Hawk foraging habitat. However, the code does not require mitigation to be within that 10-mile radius, but it does require a 1 to 1 ratio, and it does also require consultation with CDFW. However, as the Option 2 I mentioned earlier in 16.130.110, that the council may approve other means of mitigation, those other means are not required to go through CDFW for consultation. The proposed mitigation does not represent, furthermore, as far as the consultation with CDFW, they feel the proposed mitigation does not represent the same quality foraging habitat, as they feel Swinson's Hawk forages more often in mixed agricultural lands versus the grasslands and mixed lands of the east county area. Furthermore, CDFW feels the mitigation proposal would create an unfair advantage over neighboring mitigation banks such as the Westerveld Mitigation Bank, which have approved service areas in accordance with the 10-mile radius by CDFW. Regarding SEPA and CEQA, the SEPA Special Plan Area, as previously mentioned, was approved with an EIR that was certified by City Council in 2014. The proposed text amendments to the EIR, as previously described, would not change the impact conclusions of the EIR. The Van Vleek mitigation proposal would still continue to mitigate at a 1 to 1 ratio, and there would not be increases of variability of the impact for Swinson's Hawk foraging habitat. The addendum does not expand the Susa Dairy property nor the SEPA property. The property would remain to be developed in the same area with the same densities and intensities. However, the request is to mitigate at a different location. And related to the CEQA addendum, that staff is, has determined for that addendum, we do not require a public notification as far as CEQA goes, but we did notify to a 2,000-foot radius of the site and included ECOs, Friends of the Swinson's Hawk, and the Sherre Club in that noticing. Tonight, staff is recommending the approval of the addendum to the EIR. I'd like to invite Joyce Hunting, our staff biologist, to come up and say a few words. The applicant has prepared a presentation also, if you'd like to get right into that after you hear from Joyce Hunting.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmember. I'm Joyce Hunting. I'm a biologist with the city. I've been working here since 2004. And these are issues that we were very familiar with. I was asked to review the proposal that was brought forward as mitigation for SEPA at the Van Vleek property. I reviewed it all. I consulted with experts in the field, and we believe in this one, this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to capture a large contiguous piece of land, to do some enhancements, to increase the prey base for Swinson's Hawk, and allow that recruitment, in other words, a successful fledging, to provide more, more population, larger population sizes to the region. It may not necessarily mitigate for a hawk lost in the city, but will add to the overall population in the South County, and that's what we think is important. I have, if you have any questions? Thank you. I'll be here.
Thanks. Let's go ahead and declare the public hearing open, and applicants, step online, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, councilmembers. Brian Cooley representing the applicant team and the Camillo's Companies. And also, part of our presentation this evening, we have Stan Van Vleek, owner of the Van Vleek Ranch, Jim Eastep, biological consultant. We also have Ryan Broderick, who's a former director of California Fish and Wildlife Agency. And in attendance tonight, we have members of the Van Vleek family, Jerry Camillo, the master developer of Susa Dairy. We're very excited to be here in front of you this evening in support of our proposal. Not only is this a very exciting environmental and biological step forward, but it also is a key implementation tool for the Southeast Policy Area. As you're well aware, the Southeast Policy Area is a 1,200-acre smart growth master plan area. The city has devoted significant time and resources and financial resources into the implementation of SEPA. At full build-out, the Southeast Policy Area will provide a 5 to 1 jobs-to-housing ratio for the city of Elk Grove and upwards of 23,000 new jobs. In addition, will provide critical housing to help address our region's housing shortage. And as I said earlier, this first step mitigation, along with some of the construction that's going on right now with the sewer lift station along Bilby Road and the extension of Bruceville Road and Lots Parkway, are critical igniters for the Southeast Policy Area. So we're very excited tonight to be before you and have this opportunity to really provide, as your own city biological consultants stipulated, 895 contiguous acres for the species, first of any of its kind in this region. So with that, I'd like to introduce Stan Van Vleek to carry on with the rest of our presentation. We'll be open for questions later on. Also, we want to ask to have the right to offer some rebuttal post-public testimony, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Stan Van Vleek, and I'm representing my family. It's an honor to be here tonight because we are putting forward something that we think is very special. It's interesting, because you have spent about two years, you and your staff, with us talking about how we could really make this special. And Elk Grove wanted to go places that nobody else has done before in terms of saving habitat, and we're all in for that. This is something, and again, the reason why our family's here today is because this is going to last perpetuity. If you agree to this, it's forever. So our family's going to be having this property and caring for it and doing the right thing for many generations to come. So we want to all be in, and so that's why our family's here tonight. And I think it's important, and some of the council members said, because I want to go through kind of quickly, and they said, let's hear about it. Because if it is special, we want to make sure that the citizens of Elk Grove hear what we're doing to help not just the citizens here, but this region. So bear with me as we go through a little bit more detail than normal. One of the first things we want to do is start how this would derive. About two years ago, as we were analyzing our family business operations, we came to a challenging decision. We're at a fork of the road after being here over 160 years. The issue came that because of cost in California, it didn't make sense for us to stay here anymore under our current practices, which for us, it's difficult. Again, we still have our covered wagon from coming here from in the west, you know, right after the gold rush, but we have to figure out how to survive. We had really two choices in that fork of the road. We sell for development, or we try something new and innovative. We said, let's try something new and innovative first. We'd prefer not to go the other route. And that's when we sat down and looked at the different options. And one of the options, we thought, is potentially going into the biological area and doing easements, taking the monies that come from those easements, reinvesting them back in the family business, and keeping the business going for 250 years and beyond. And again, in this region. Well, this didn't start because of a developer approaching us, Elk Grove approaching us, or other cities saying, let's do this. We think it's a quick and easy way to do it. Two years ago, we sat down and we did it the right way. We asked the public agencies who deal with fish and wildlife. We asked environmental friends that I have. I served on HCP for 10 years. I served on HCP for 10 years. We asked the key officials, who's the best person that understands the Swenson Hawk? Because we'd understood that's probably the best species for our ranch. Ironically, every person that we spoke with who are experts in this area, at least worked in this area, gave us one name, Jim Eastep. So I met with Jim and had a very candid conversation and explained, we're at this fork in the road, Jim. I need to have you take a look at our operation and tell us whether biologically it really is something that that will work and is special. If it's not, I respect that. We're going to move down a different path. If it is, we want to take that route. It was interesting because we're waiting about two weeks for that answer to come back because it's our destiny. Jim comes back, and I was so happy to hear it, and it was kind because Joyce reiterated the words. He came back and said, I think this is an opportunity of a lifetime. And he said, what you have here is a collage of biology creates, in essence, its own ecosystem. And he said, this is something that I am willing to get behind and support because it's the right thing to do. And it's from there that then we reached out to the different cities, and we reached out to the counties and others and said, we would like to create a partnership. We want to keep our family here. We want to be able to keep our ag operation here, and we want to be able to figure out a way to continue to be able to connect with this area. So with that background, that lays the purpose and the background of why we're here. So if we can, specifics on our mitigation. What we're doing, and it's ironic because of Fishing Game, they talked about, they looked at the square corners of the fields that we're looking at mitigating. Respectfully, that's in the checkboxes that they do. Fortunately, your staff and the other supporters that are here today look well beyond that and see the scope of really what we're doing. First, this is not just 900 acres that's being set aside, and as your staff identified, we already have 700-plus acres that's in a mitigation bank, and we've already dedicated almost 1,200 acres total. But in addition to that, we've reached agreement with the county, as long as what's approved for Elk Grove, because again, if we're going to have to go development, we can't put part of the ranch in this, so we're either all in or not. We've said if this approves with Elk Grove, we will also put 1,100 acres into the HCP, and we will then be for Sack County HCP, we will then be the Kickstarter that will be about 90% of their beginning acreage to help this region. So not only is Elk Grove helping Elk Grove in development and jobs and housing and being able to move with that, you're going to help this region be able to continue with economic stimulus, but also a biological plan that's been worked on for over 20 years. This is helping it to happen. And so Elk Grove, again, is on the cutting edge. So I applaud you for looking at this and taking us to the additional step. So that's, again, one of the things that this offers. In addition, again, not in the four boxes of a Fishing Game, unfortunately, a Fishing Game analysis sometimes, but importantly to consider, and your staff identified it, right next to the acres that we're looking to set aside for Elk Grove are the irrigated pastures that have already been set aside. So you have this irrigated pasture that gives the hawks the ability to go over that, and they're going to be going back and forth. There are no walls that go between our pastures. They're going to make it over, and they're going to be able to feed off that. But in addition to those pastures, you have something that's very rare in this area. There's only about six or seven lakes in this whole county that are the size that we have. We have a 300-acre lake that carries 2,000-acre feet of water that's right in the middle of these preserves. And that's, in essence, that call comes as part of the package. So you the biology that goes with these with this lake is tremendous, and two miles of riparian area that goes through the middle of these preserves. Again, not it's not on the checklist as you're going through, but this is the reality that your staff biologically and your developers looked or your development staff looked at and identified, this truly is special. So if we can't, but your staff wasn't satisfied with that, respectfully, they wanted more. They said, we want to take Elk Grove a place that nobody's that no one's done before. We want to have on the private side, we want to have you not only set aside your land, which is what usually the easements require, we want to have you go in and do active habitat enhancement. And as your staff identified, but I wanted to underscore this because on the private side, that's not done. Usually, if you go into an habitat enhancement, you're getting money from Packer, money from the state, or something else to be able to do that. Elk Grove's been able to pull it off and put really put that on the private side, and we're willing to do that. We're going to go in and do things that haven't been done, so Elk Grove, again, can be a leader. So if those people are coming in and someone says, well, they've got concerns, again, looking at the four corners of a document because they don't think we checked all the boxes, look at the reality. What is being done is setting a precedent. So now, and again, while the kids are in the room and their grandkids and their actor, they're going to be required to be raising the top forage for Swenson Hawk in perpetuity. That's forever. That is significant that this city has stepped up and said, that's what we're going to do. Respectfully to the other jurisdictions in this area, including the HCP, they are not requiring that as part of the mitigation. They do that for studies or do that for something else, but not part of their mitigation process. You've gone there. And I tell you, it wasn't easy as we went through that analysis, but we stepped up and said, yes, we'll do it. And that's an example of what this city's willing to do. And then we talked about the size, and it was referenced by your staff. If you take a quick look, because the good Mayor Lee was at our ranch to take a look at it, when you see something on a picture like this, it doesn't really give you perspective in terms of what it means. If you take a look, there's 3,000 houses across the street. One, it gives you the proximity. If someone's going to buy our ranch, we have to do that, they're not going to be able they're not going to buy it for cows. They're going to buy it to take those houses, replicate them across the street. But it gives you an idea of the size of what Elk Grove is setting and you're accelerating to preserve, because if you do this, it kickstarts the rest of what's around, which is going to be the HCP and other mitigation that'll be happening. And so you look at that size, and now let's pull out in the county and see what you're doing for the county. As we look, there's two areas, this was identified by staff. Your staff identified strategically, the Van Vleek Ranch is right in between two large preserves. You take now and you preserve Van Vleek Ranch, you now have a lynchpin corridor that brings together those habitats. And importantly, as you see this habitat, as you look up through the top on the north, the Van Vleek area is in the red. As you pivot down and go low and then to your left, you'll see actually this corridor with the greens and the grays, those go in and trace in, that's the Consumnus River Preserve. Guess where those go to? Elk Grove. So what you're creating is now a preserve that has connections and relations going all the way into that area to the East County. So again, as people are analyzing in their mind, how's that connected? Well, first, as the hawk flies, this isn't 18 miles that you and I would call the 18 miles. The way when they when they do an analysis for the project, they go in the middle of the project and in the middle of the project. Just for the record, it's 16, not 18, because when you have big projects, it's actually closer. So one, for the record, kind of bothers me when they keep saying 18. But it is, again, I respect that. So but what you look at is actually now, you have this corridor that goes all the way from where we are, all the way to you folks in a preserve. And so you've got these bridges. So that's what Elk Grove is proposing to do for this region. All right, quick background on this ranch, because not only does it provide habitat, we've been a business here, we're one of the oldest businesses in this region, and we are in Elk Grove suburbs. Our family members and our employees who've lived on the ranch have gone to Elk Grove High School for almost 100 years. We counted probably almost 20 people have gone through, family members and others have gone to Elk Grove. You know, it's we are part of Elk Grove. We're part of Elk Grove Historical Society. We've been part of your structure. Elk Grove is large in terms of its width because it's been a farming community for 100-plus years, but we've been one of your first family farming operations, and I'm proud to say we're still here. One thing is you take a look at, in addition to the operation you saw with the headquarters, we also own and manage for two other large family farming operations, so a total of 13,000 acres that we're running in Sack County. And candidly, if we go to the alternative of having to leave, it affects their family operations as well, because what they are are family cattle businesses that are similar to ours, that they're family businesses. Unfortunately, their children said they chose to go elsewhere and not be coming back to the business, so they don't have those choices. So the point is, right now, we're keeping those as open spaces, and those families are keeping those in open spaces because they have options. If we're not there, that may not be there. And to give you an idea of what that type of acreage represents, Elk Grove is 42 square miles, we're about 24 square miles. So about half of the size of all of Elk Grove, right here, is in this deal in terms of what it protects from a business standpoint as well, and the land that we're keeping open. Not on the easements, but what we're doing is all part of our business. That's a big swath in this one ability to be able to do that. So and again, we're a business. We are proud to say that we produce an ultra-premium beef product. We are in the French Laundry. We're in Michael Mina's restaurant. We've been working 161 years on this vintage, and we think we've got it right. We are proud to say we actually will be in the premiere series on the Travel Channel for their top food show with Andrew Zimmer this Thursday night. And ironically, it's on California Food and History. They're doing the food that was eaten back with the Pony Express and what happened then, and their view of history is that. And then the California and then the Van Vleek family. That's what they're looking at for California history and food. So we're proud that we are, again, representing Elk Grove, the Sacramento region, and that's part of what you're doing, is you're helping to keep something that has national recognition. The national livestock industry has identified this as the progressive way of the future of being able to bring together with cities and others and keep spaces open like this, and so is the state countermans and local as well. So again, what you're doing is innovative. I apologize all the time that it's taken, but again, these are all the new things that you're doing, many of which no one else is. So the future of the ranch, we've talked about it. We're at a crossroads. Our hope is that we will be able to move forward with this, and then this operation stays here in perpetuity, even if something happens with the Van Vleek Ranch, Van Vleek family. The way these easements work, this land stays in easements and stays in agriculture forever. So it would be another farming family that came in if something ever happened to us. So it's, you know, it's so it stays with the land, which is important. That's the commitment, and that's dedication, so this stays open forever. Okay, just a quick list. I'm not going to read them all. These are the elected officials and organizations that have embraced what we're talking about. We're proud that they are standing behind this, and if we can bring your attention to, and they many of them will be tonight briefly providing their support as well. If we can, I'd like to introduce Jim Eastep, and I've already provided the background on Jim, and many of you know Jim's expert work, and so I'm not going to get into that deal detail. After Jim, we're going to be having the former director of Fishing Game, now Fishing Wildlife, Ryan Broderick. One thing that's important to note about Ryan, not only was he the former director, but Mr. Broderick was also the manager over this region when he was with Fishing Wildlife. So he helped oversee what was going on with the HCP, with Elk Grove, with Sacramento. So he is intimately involved and understood how what's been happening from a wildlife basis in this region. And also, as he rose his wave up through Fishing Game, was involved in developing and being part of how the mitigation process is set up at that agency. So he could provide some insight on that as well. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Eastep. So Jim, thank you for your time, and I appreciate your patience. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you. Hi, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, council members, nice to be here. I'm Jim Eastep. I'm a consulting biologist. I was brought on to take a look at the Van Vleek Ranch and the project area in Elk Grove and to do an assessment of both sites. So I'm here today to just give a few additional points, key issues, I think, a couple of which that Stan didn't get into with regard to the value of Stan's ranch. And I'm not sure how I'm going to operate this, but I do have a few slides that I'd like to show also, so. Oh, is it on here? I'm sorry. Okay, now how do I how do I advance it? Just scroll here. Okay, got it. Okay, so I have a few issues. By the way, I've been, as I said, I'm a consulting biologist, and I've been working in this area for a long time and conducting research and assessments on this Swenson Hawk for a ridiculously long time now in this in Sacramento Valley and throughout California, 30-plus years now. So we know a lot about the hawk now, and this has become a very interesting project for for me and for a lot of us because of the opportunities it provides. But there are a few key issues that I'd like to bring up. The first of those is the value of the Van Vleek Ranch itself. And the Van Vleek Ranch is suitable habitat for the Swenson Hawk, similar to the value of the impact area. And I got a couple of slides here if I can do it. Oh, there it is. This is a photo of the impacted area in Elk Grove. It's kind of an oat hay environment, so it's fairly typical of the area. This is what the majority of the project area looks like. And this is a shot of grassland prairie in on Van Vleek Ranch. So again, a perfectly suitable area for Swenson Hawk foraging. They use grasslands like this. In fact, this is more the native condition for the species. So both very suitable. Here's another example of the project area. This is an orchard grass down toward the southern end of the project area. There's also some alfalfa down there. So these are pretty high-value crops. And on the Van Vleek Ranch, this is some irrigated pasture. There's a big chunk of irrigated pasture there as well in addition to the grassland area, so it's a really good complement to the the grassland prairies that are there. This is also very high-value foraging habitat for the hawk. So again, there are a lot of similarities between them. You can also see the existing cottonwood groves that occur on the ranch that make really good nesting habitat for the species. And I also added in one more slide. This is our we do have one Swenson Hawk nest that's on the property, at least one that we know of, and this is where it nests on the tree, on the cottonwood tree on the right. So just again, by example, to give you an idea of the differences and the similarities actually between the two project areas, the impact area and the proposed mitigation area. My second point is protecting large intact landscapes have greater value than small disjunct parcels. That's a really critical thing in this case, and it's always an important thing. The Van Vleek Ranch offers an opportunity to protect a large intact grassland pastureland landscape contiguous with other protected lands that provide substantially greater ecological value and sustainable habitat value than smaller isolated agricultural parcels. So if we could protect large irrigated landscapes in the valley and manage them with crop patterns that are compatible with Swenson Hawk foraging, that's the ideal situation if we could do that. But those those opportunities are very rare, and they're usually economically infeasible. Third point, protecting large uncultivated landscapes is essential for long-term sustainability of the species. We focused on protecting cultivated lands for the species for 30 years plus, because this is where the majority of Swenson Hawks nest in association with these irrigated agricultural areas. But it's been at the expense of protecting more ecological-stable grassland landscapes, which is similar to the species' historic pre-agricultural habitat. Because agricultural patterns are primarily a function of economics and water availability, the long-term sustainability of irrigated lands functioning as habitat for Swenson Hawk in the Central Valley is increasingly questionable. A lot of that has to do with the proliferation of orchards and vineyards and things like that, and the changes in the valley in terms of agriculture. Although continued focus on irrigated lands is important, that's still a key thing in terms of managing the species throughout the valley, it shouldn't be the expense of opportunities to protect large uncultivated native landscapes with consistent habitat value to provide for the long-term persistence of the species. So preserving these areas on the periphery of the population that are more natural to the species are critical in terms of being able to sustain the population over the long time, over the long term, particularly because of, again, the status of agricultural communities in the Central Valley and their value to the species. The fourth and last item is, I also wanted to mention that in the context of a regional conservation plan like this county will have eventually, the 10-mile distance has little relevance. So I know it's been something that's been thrown around over the years for various things. It's not a it's not a policy, it's nothing like that, but it's but it occasionally shows up in in mitigation proposals. Our goal is to protect and preserve the regional population of Swenson Hawks in Sacramento County and throughout the Central Valley, and this is emphasized with the implementation of regional conservation plans like the South Sacramento County Plan. The 10-mile concept was initially designed to focus on the local population affected by the impact. But that becomes less relevant as we move into this phase of managing broader landscapes and population-level protection. So again, that's the value of being able to to protect. So again, that's the value of being able to protect this large contiguous natural area that's within the range of the species. It's not in the interior irrigated lands like we typically mitigate, but it's got many, many components that are very, very important to this species and also to many other species. So I think it's a really interesting and opportunity that'd be tough to pass up and definitely a good trade-off. Questions?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions, just because, an opportunity to pick your brain a little bit. I've heard your name tossed around since back in the days when people used to confuse you with our former city manager, Jim Estep.
Yeah, I remember. The guy who pronounced the name incorrectly.
Yeah, you're correct. He pronounced it wrong, so. But I, you know, I'm not an ornithologist, and I know even less about Swainson socks, but I just want to, since you are, as Mr. Van Black said, have long been referenced as pretty well an expert in the field. Are the Swainson socks that come to this area in the Central Valley, are they the same species as the Swainson hawk that goes to the plains in the Midwest?
Yes, it's the same species. What we've discovered over just the last few years with some telemetry work that we've been doing though, is our Central Valley population is very unique. It migrates differently, and it winters differently. That's, in fact, we have a paper coming out here in the next couple of months that'll show the differences in the migratory and wintering areas of the Central Valley population. So it's a really interesting, unique population. And there is some genetics work that's going on and that will continue, that will look at some of the genetic differences between the two populations. But at least for the moment, they are the same species, and they're very likely remain the same species technically. But this is a unique population that we have here.
But they do behave differently?
There are some behavioral differences as well.
Specifically to respect to migration as well?
That, for sure, they do. Yeah. There's also some more subtle behavioral differences that are...
And then pardon the general ignorance of this question, but I have no better analogy. Are they similar to, like salmon, that will return to the same nesting habitat, or do they just have a general area that they go to, or what?
They tend to be quite traditional to nesting areas. So birds that, that select a certain area to nest in one year, they'll continue to come back to that same area until that nest is gone. And that happens frequently. They'll either lose it because the tree will be removed or will blow down, or another species will take it over. They arrive a little later in the valley than other species nest, so very often their nests are taken over by red-tailed hawks or great horned owls or something. That'll force them to move elsewhere. So there are circumstances where they move around, and they certainly do move around. But as a general rule, they're very traditional to nest sites.
Okay. But as you build a population in a nesting area, that would, that population feasibly would grow. Is that correct?
Yeah.
As more generations return to it?
Yes, and that's happening already. We're already seeing in the last ten years or so, a much greater number of birds that are showing up now nesting on the periphery of the valley in these grassland habitats where we really want them to nest. And we do have what appears to be an expanding population in the valley, which is really neat. And a lot of these birds are nesting in the grassland habitats, and in some cases up in the oak woodlands and the, and the lateral valleys that go up into the Sierra Nevada. So we do see an expansion already. Not because there's new habitat there, but just because the population itself is doing better, and we see birds, new birds showing up and selecting new nest sites. But as we develop nesting areas on, on areas that lack them, the idea is that they will become occupied and establish nest sites that would be maintained for some period of time. Yeah.
Okay. And so my last question relates to that point, that 161 years for the Van Black family is a long time, but the Swainson socks have been coming here for much longer.
Sure.
I assume before the introduction of agriculture, they would have traditionally used foraging habitat on native grassland areas?
Yeah, that is the, that is the habitat for this species, the grassland species. The fact that they nest the way they do in these irrigated landscapes is sort of an artificial thing that happens. And it's a really neat thing, because otherwise we tend to think of agriculture as removing, as removing habitat for species like this. But there are certain types of agriculture that are, turn out to be pretty beneficial for them. Hay crops, alfalfa, that kind of stuff tend to be really good. And where those have occurred in the Central Valley, we've had, over the years, quite a bit of growth in the population because they're relying on those areas. But, again, it's an artificial distribution for that species based on agriculture. But as I mentioned a minute ago, as those areas begin to decline, for a variety of reasons, water issues, the irrigation of alfalfa, for example, is a huge thing now, economic issues, the proliferation of orchards and vineyards, there's all these things that have affected the distribution of the hawk. That distribution will continue to change. So what's interesting is, is that historically, kind of get into your question, historically, the majority of our, of our Swainson socks in the, in the state would have been associated with grassland habitats. So in Sacramento County, for example, today, we probably have many more nesting pairs than we did prior to agriculture. Because, again, they've really packed into these ag areas now, in a, in a distribution that is way above what you would normally see in a natural environment. Historically, grasslands were, you know, they're quite common around, but there are also wetlands and woodlands and things like that that weren't, were not as suitable. So they were restricted to those grassland habitats, and they didn't nest in such close proximity as they do in these ag areas. So, but we're trying to, what we're thinking of now, and what we've been leaning toward over these last few years, is we've really focused on protecting ag lands. But that gets to be a problem for a lot of reasons. Because sustainability of ag lands and the type of ag land that you need to have to support the hawk, there are a lot of other factors that go into that, not the least of which is economic. And so it's very, very difficult. And we're seeing that change occur throughout the valley now, and it's having an effect as our distribution changes with ag patterns. But it's really important, I think, for the long-term sustainability of the species to protect as much as we can those habitat areas that are stable, the grassland areas, even some of the irrigated pasture areas, but the uncultivated habitats that the species has relied on. Those are the areas that are really essential to maintaining the population over the, over the long term as we continue to see this change in ag patterns.
Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate you being here to provide some insight.
Sure.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you also, Jim. I was wondering, in terms of, sorry, a couple of questions for you. The preferred habitat is alfalfa or hay, and it's, I'd heard it's because the hawks can hunt better, they can see better through that for the vermin and rodents they're hunting. Is that true? Or is there other reasons why that's the primary preferred habitat?
No, that's the, that's the primary thing. When you see, so, again, and that's why they're in certain ag crops and not in others, where you see places like, that have, like Glenn County is mostly rice, for example. They're not using rice fields very much, obviously, because they're flooding up, so there's not a lot of rodent production that occurs there that's accessible to the birds. Fresno County, where there's a lot of vineyards all over the place. Again, they can't get down in that, so they're not, there may be rodents there, but they're not accessible to the birds. Where you have a lot of corn growing. Corn is only a suitable crop certain times of the year when it's very small and the birds can seed down and access rodent prey. But crops that are hay crops, pastures, grasslands, things that keep a low vegetation profile, they can see into those types of landscapes and they can access the prey. So, yeah, they're very visual, and they have to be able to get down into it. Anything that kind of grows up higher that prohibits access, they're not going to use.
Okay, thank you. And then pertaining to your question, or your comment earlier about how the nesting is, they're generally habitual and where they come back to. When I think of the hawk's migration pattern from South America, right, all the way through such a large distance? Is it, so is sixteen miles really different, a different area?
No, no. And it depends on how you, how you look at that. If you think in terms of the distance a hawk can simply travel, sixty miles is something that they can do in sixty seconds, so it's not an issue at all.
So if they're nesting, if they're nesting in the area we're talking about mediating for versus where the Van Black Ranch is, that's essentially, relatively speaking, the same general area where they're, where they're coming back to nest?
Oh, sure. When you're thinking in terms of, especially thinking in terms of sustaining this more regional population. Originally, some of the mitigation for the hawk focused on, you have a hawk in this location, and we want your mitigation to protect that hawk. So there were these distance requirements, not requirements, but recommendations. If you go too far away, then that might do good things over here, but it's not doing anything for that hawk right there. Well, we've really moved away from that concept, you know, for a lot of the reasons that I've already described. But the really key thing is to look at this more broad distribution of the species and the regional population. So it's not really important what that hawk on the edge of that project is doing and what happens to it. It's important how you're managing your greater landscape and providing habitat to support a population that you're trying to sustain. So.
Great.
That's kind of where that originated.
Sure. Thank you.
And it's not, it's not that there's not value in doing that, it's just that we've moved away from that concept quite a bit now.
Yeah, well, my only, you know, point was that it seems like sixteen miles relatively to, relative to the distance it's migrating, whether it nests there or sixteen miles away, it's all pretty much the same general area.
Yeah, it is. I mean, you can look at things like the foraging distance of individual birds. And they'll, they'll certainly go out that far to hunt from, so a bird that nests in Elk Grove will easily travel there to forage. If there's plenty of food around without going that far, though, obviously, they're not going to do that.
Right.
But they absolutely have the ability to do that very, very easily. It's a very mobile bird. It lives on the wing and loves to fly. So, yeah, that's, the distance is not an issue for that.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, I do have a question. With the, the number of acres that's being set aside on the Van Black property, give me an idea of what, how many hawks that would support the habitat itself?
Well, it sort of depends. We don't, you know, it's not so much an issue anyway where we want it to support a lot of hawks, because we'd like to see the hawks nesting in a, more of a natural condition anyway, not packed in like they do in some of the irrigated areas in the central part of, in the interior of the valley. But there is good habitat there on the ranch, too. There's a, there's this really nice irrigated pasture, there's some alfalfa out there, there's some cropland on it, and all this really nice grassland prairie that's out there, and they use all of that stuff. But given the number of trees that are out there, and there are some really nice stands of trees, very easily, an area of that size can support, you know, ten or twelve pairs of hawks. Now, again, those, doesn't, doesn't mean that all those hawks are even going to use that area to forage, because it's a very mobile hawk. They might decide to fly over to the neighboring area to hunt, you know. So, again, you have to kind of get away from that concept a little bit and think in terms of broader landscapes and how we want to protect those broader landscapes in large areas, rather than, one of the problems with some of the mitigation that we do in ag lands is it will, will acquire a hundred-acre parcel somewhere, and will put good alfalfa on it or something like that. But eventually, I mean, you, you have no certainty that anything will ever use a field like that. But, you know, but even if they do, once the surrounding ag lands are modified, then the value goes way down there anyway. So by buying and protecting these small pieces around, if you can't manage your landscape in a way that's going to support the bird, then those are going to lose value over time. So, again, those are, it's important to do that, there's value in doing that, but it's also really essential to look beyond that and protect these areas that are more stable, like the ranch.
Yeah. Do you know the genesis of this ten-mile radius?
It gets very confusing, but yeah, sort of. Part of the ten-mile thing originated from some telemetry work that we did back in the eighties when we were looking at how far birds will go to forage. And it was just a number that was thrown out there. They actually, we had birds actually foraging out to twenty miles, so. But it was just considered to be a nice, round number to throw out. So there isn't any real good science behind that number at all. But that's kind of where it originated. And it was used in the initial guidelines for the hawk to determine whether or not you would mitigate at all. If you have a hawk nesting within ten miles of your project, then you would be required to mitigate. If you didn't have anything, if you had a hawk that was in ten-point-five miles, you wouldn't be required to mitigate. So that was sort of the guidelines that were used. Then somehow it got morphed into this issue of mitigation and where to mitigate, but that's more of a local thing. That's not necessarily a common practice everywhere. It's not a regulation or even something that's been formally proposed by Fish and Wildlife, but you do see it. And, again, it was, as we know, it was included in the Elk Grove ordinance as well. But the idea was, at least for Elk Grove, was to, again, go back to this concept of trying to protect those hawks, you know? So mitigate as close as you can within this general area to protect those hawks. So that was the purpose in it. And, again, it originated in this sort of funny way where it morphed into this idea and this concept. So it's not, it's not an unreasonable thing in some respects, but it kind of creates sort of a narrow vision about how to manage the hawk in a large landscape.
Okay. Any other questions? Nope, no questions. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, staff. It's a pleasure to be here. My name's Ryan Broderick, I'm former director of the Department of Fish and Game. But I started in the department in eighty-two, progressed to being regional manager at one point in the Ranch Codova office. And at that time, the Swainson sock had been listed, listed and had the opportunity to work with Jim, other biologists, Jim and Jude with the Friends of the Swainson Sock. My staff was intimately involved in trying to develop the guidelines. We used the hawk as an opportunity to look at assembling landscapes. It certainly was one of the major contributors to the initiatives to develop habitat conservation plans for South Sacramento, for Yolo County. San Joaquin County actually initiated and completed their HCP, once again driven by the Swainson Sock, a very good challenge by a dedicated gentleman in Stockton with the Audubon Society, drove, I think, a good policy decision, and I think that's worked well in those circumstances. When I looked at this proposal, I have had the opportunity to work on large-scale habitat conservation plans, strategic acquisitions using public funds, and partnership funds for large landscapes. I've had the opportunity to preserve fifteen acres at a time at a hundred thousand dollars an acre and watched it turn into an incredibly difficult enforcement problem between motorcycles and grocery carts. It was important to do, but over time, and watching habitat conservation plans and mitigation occur in small fragments, having a lot of field time with the Swainson Sock when I was in law enforcement and taking my biologists out to show them a Sudan grass field that was, that was freshly cut and real thin sheet water was put across it, and they'd never seen a Swainson Sock up close, well, that's an opportunity to see them up close. You see egrets, you see blue herons, Swainson socks and crows, and sometimes seagulls, in the same field eating rodents. And the birds are to the point, and it's, so it's, it's a food orgy. But it's a manipulated opportunity for those hawks to have forage that is a byproduct, not directly done by part of the agricultural practice. I've lived, born and raised in the San Joaquin Valley, Central Valley. I've watched the transition between row crops and seasonal crops to permanent crops, grapes, almonds, pistachios. I can tell you that they're very, much more lucrative than the Sudan grass and alfalfa and the dairy industry that was so dependent upon that. Certainly, California's had to consolidate, and I think that's been part of the loss. But the gross, I think, transition over the timeframe, thirty years now, of habitats from what used to be kind of accepted as agricultural byproducts that were food for the Swainson Sock. Hawk on a seasonal basis is something that's diminished. I've come to the conclusion that, by making probably more mistakes than successes, that the ability to have a large footprint, to manage within that footprint, to do some artificial management, but a large landscape, that is a diminishing resource in California. To have the size of the Van Fleck Ranch can actually be holistically managed and is close enough to other major conservation investments that have been done to wildlife conservation board, the support of nonprofits, I think is definitely a better way to go for long-term sustainability. The Consumers River Preserve, its connection, Deer Creek, the habitats are being developed and speculated on in terms of what would be the right mix, and the, now the approval, I don't know when the impotation period will be for the South Sacramento HCP, those, that bodes well for a more robust, more stable environment for threatening a dangerous species and for all species, and for the appreciation by, by the public. So why it's not consistent with the 10-mile radius as proposed in the, in the Department of Fish and Wildlife's proposal, I can tell you that from a pragmatic standpoint, that has been left on the books because putting the energy and time into trying to determine what is the right size, what is the perfect algorithm, is really beyond the capacity of most everyone at this point. The environment is changing so dynamically over the last 10 years, whether it be aquatic or terrestrial, you need to think big, you need to take a little risk, you need to be willing to let your grandchildren judge your wisdom, and you hope that when it's all said and done, that it works. So from that perspective, that's why I was here, trying to provide some corporate memory and background. I have great respect for the folks that have promoted the conservation of the Swenson's Hawk, great respect for the department folks, but once again, I'm worried that those, what we used to consider agricultural attributes that were free, i.e. Sudan grass, alfalfa, barley that was harvested, are, are going to be less and less of an opportunity in California. I can tell you on the state wildlife areas, we can ring a dinner bell for Swenson's Hawk. We can, we can harvest some of the crops that we have there for wildlife, short, do a prism flooding, and I can show you dozens and dozens and dozens of, of raptors, because it's, it's, it's the, it's not the alfalfa, it's the rodents underneath it. And once they get up and start moving, it is definitely a dinner bell. In doing that, we now have, at least on wildlife areas, have to be very cautious, because if we do that slow prism, flood over a two or three period of time, which provides the best nutrit, nutritional basis and food, whether it be insects or rodents, we usually wind up having a mosquito abatement district suggesting to us to either drain it, or drain it, or we're going to spray it, or they spray it and then say drain it. So that's just a, maybe a silly sideline, but that's a reality when you're developing, managing small parcels in an area that is in proximity to populations. Mosquitoes are a real issue, and they compromise our ability to provide the best groceries. Any questions, gentlemen?
Councilman Detrick?
I meant to ask Jim earlier, but maybe you'll have the answer.
You know what? I can't hear.
In your, in your experience, is there any other properties that have put together such a unique package as what's being presented tonight?
No, there is not. Most of the large acquisitions are on ranches of this age, there's very few, and most of them are direct acquisitions for easements to extinguish development rights versus establish a mosaic of habitats for the purposes of species protection. We may have some more of that happening, but it's very unusual to have a parcel of this size. In fact, I can think of none that approach it, other than acquisitions by the state.
Well, I appreciate you being here tonight, because to me, you had a, a very strong sense of balance from your position with the, with the state of California, and very articulate as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That would make it pretty profound, yeah.
With that, we've got one last speaker, Daniel Washington, with Assemblymember Ken Cooley's office here to speak in support of the proposal. And after that, we're hoping to answer any questions, and again, I'd like to be able to come back on rebuttal following public comments. So with that, Mr. Washington?
Good evening, Mayor Lee and City Council. I just wanted to take a brief moment to emphasize the Assemblymen's support of this proposal. A lot of the speakers before me, they brought up some really good points and some good information, so I, hopefully, you guys will consider that and take that into account. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you.
And just to correct the record, I thought he would, he's from Assemblymember Cooper's office.
Yeah, I was gonna say. They change jobs? Okay.
With that, that concludes, that concludes our presentation, and again, we're, I'll be answering any questions as the discussion goes along tonight, so, thank you.
Okay, excellent. At this point, want to open up a comment. We have a number of speakers sign up to speak. First speaker up to bat is Robert Dugan.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Pleasure to be here on behalf of the Metro Chamber. I will try not to repeat all of the themes that have been referenced already, but let me just emphasize a couple of points. You know, we're pleased to be here to support this mitigation plan and pleased to support getting on, right, with the Southeast Policy Area. Want to make one quick point. When you look at this mitigation program that's in front of you, this is a forward-thinking master plan, little innovation. Funny, I was talking to Darryl Dome before the meeting, you know, and, and the innovation that occurs here in Elk Grove, and this is no different. When you look at a lot of mitigation, especially leading up to the modern era of mitigation, and I spent my 10 years on a planning commission, we have a tendency to decommission productive ag lands for mitigation, and then we pay somebody to go create and fabricate particular habitats, right? You see them when you fly into Sacramento. That's what all that funny stuff is on the ground for everybody watching. When you look down and you see what looks like a surreal square acreage environment, it's been created. In this case, you're looking at a proposal that not only does not take productive ag land out of use in a region where ag is a critical part of our economy, but it takes ag land, uses it for its highest best use, and preserves it for mitigation, because that's also an appropriate best use, as has been witnessed by those that testified before me that are far bigger experts than I am. And that's important, because as, has already been referenced, you know, the ag heritage here of Elk Grove, the ag heritage here of our region, with UC Davis and all the work that goes on, we have been labeled as one of the most sustainable innovative farming regions in the country. It's a big deal, and you're choosing to not set aside productive ag lands, but rather embrace productive ag lands as part of a corridor that, when you're done, as has already been referenced, will create one of the largest preserves in the region. So we're here to please, to, to be supportive of what you're doing. You're preserving our ag heritage, you're, you're taking what is envisioned as we talk about these habitat conservation plans, you're putting them to good use, ensuring we have appropriate mitigation, and preparing to help us increase job capacity in the region and help us deal with the housing shortage that we're facing. So we're pleased to be here to, to support you in that regard, and we'll be looking forward to helping you fill up that square footage with the right businesses. God knows, we've got the workforce that needs the housing. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Next speaker is Lindsay Liebig.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Lindsay Liebig, and I'm the Executive Director for the Sacramento County Farm Bureau. On behalf of the Sacramento County Farm Bureau's Board of Directors, I am here to express the organization's unanimous support to the use of the land for Swenson's Hawk mitigation on the Van Fleck Ranch near Ranch of Marietta. We support this plan because it places easements on land that is currently in production and has future plans for continued production. Simply put, if this easement is placed on this land, the Van Fleck family will still be able to continue to raise cattle in the same manner that it has for over 160 years. However, it is our understanding that some contend that mitigation should be placed on irrigated lands within 10 miles of the proposed development in Elk Grove. We strongly oppose this proposal because it would significantly and negatively impact Elk Grove's local agricultural economy. Placing wildlife easements on irrigated lands significantly limits the crops that can be grown on those lands. Orchards, wine grapes, and structures that are necessary for dairies, nurseries, processing facilities would be severely restricted. These crops are of high value and important to Elk Grove's local agricultural economy. It is beneficial to the environment and Sacramento County to keep large working landscapes like the Van Fleck Ranch in production agriculture. The Van Fleck family has been ranching in this region for over 160 years, and we would like to see that continue, as we wish many others would be in that same position. The Van Fleck Ranch represents good quality Swenson's Hawk habitat that is home to actual nesting pairs. The large size of this mitigation area provides an enhanced benefit to the environment. And finally, the Van Fleck Ranch is strategically located between two existing preserves, putting that land under easement creates a large corridor that connects to the Consumers Preserve, which is biologically important to this region. Our organization appreciates the city of Elk Grove's thoughtful approach to this proposed mitigation and supports the use of this ranch for mitigation efforts with this proposed development. Thank you.
Lindsay, Lindsay?
Come on back.
Hi, excuse me, Mayor. Would you be able to speak to the economic, is there an economic impact for the local ag community with respect to having to compete for mitigation land values?
Absolutely. If mitigation efforts were placed within 10 miles of this proposed, you know, development site, you're looking at ag, the local ag production, wine grapes being the number one commodity in this county, by not, by having a wildlife easement on there, you cannot have permanent crops on that property. And so that would severely limit, which is a progressive nature of a lot of land in this South County area specifically moving into wine grapes, potential and economic impact to the county, to be able to prohibit those things from happening. That's the future of moving towards a permanent crop basis, whether it's orchards, we see a lot more of our nut commodities coming into this area and wine grapes, and that would severely limit the opportunity for that potential economic growth in preserving those agricultural and working landscapes here in South County. And so that's why we see this as a viable proposal, because it leaves that option open for areas of still open landscape within South Sacramento County, and really looking at a prime opportunity, which is, again, just a short 16 miles away from the proposed site, that is actual suitable habitat versus taking potential productive ag land out of production.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Paul Lindsay, following Paul is Frank Louie.
On my slip, it said I opposed this project. I don't necessarily oppose it, but I think your decision tonight will mark a sea change in how we look at Swenson's Hawk mitigation. And if I oppose it, it's strictly on procedural grounds. I feel that there should be a wider discussion on the issue and not have it limited or started with an end to an EIR, okay? Having said that, I want to draw your attention to a couple of things. You mentioned that there was a state representative here. The only state comments on this are in your binder, and they're from CDFW, pages 160 to 172. Now, earlier, staff put some quotes up on the board, but they didn't do the whole, whole quote. For instance, CDFW's comment number two on page 164, the salient quote is, "The proposed site is not within a biologically supportable distance from the impact site." Impact number three on 168, "The proposed site does not contain similar foraging habitat as the project site. The proposed site would not be able to support the larger population density that is present near the project site." Number eight on page 166, "Although the proposed mitigation site will not conflict with the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, the proposed location will not advance the Swenson Hawk preservation goals or objectives under that habitat conversation, conservation I really stand on my point that this is a procedural issue that should have a wider, larger discussion. If we're going to make such a big sea change on Swenson's Hawk policy, it should be in a bigger forum. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Frank Louie. Following Frank is John Lane.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and City Council members. My name is Frank Louie with the California Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce, and it's my pleasure to testify in support of the use of the Van Fleck Ranch for Swenson's Hawk mitigation for the Southeast Policy Area. This proposal is one that will create a win-win for the city of Elk Grove and for the Sacramento region. Using the land from the, from the Van Fleck Ranch helps meet growth demands while balancing environmental protection and preserving the wildlife habitat. It will also allow the city to start building much-needed housing and job creation centers. At the, at the same time, this approach will keep the Van Fleck ranching business operating in the region. The Van Fleck Ranch has been state, has been a staple in the local Sacramento region for over 150 years, providing jobs and economic growth for the area. Not only are they one of the oldest businesses in the area, but they have been great citizens and valuable part of the local community. The Cal-Asian Chamber appreciates Elk Grove's balanced approach to this proposal, and we support the use of the Van Fleck Ranch. Thank you very much for your time and consideration on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is John Lane. Following John is Daleman Clark.
Good evening, Mayor and Chamber. Thank you very much for taking this opportunity to hear me. I wanted to speak on behalf of the project from a unique perspective. I work for Tyker Materials, and last year, in last May, we were the ones responsible for putting the 300 acres in irrigated easements on the Van Fleck Ranch. And what was unique about that was that we were required through our own project impacts to find a rancher and, or a landowner who was willing to tie up their land for Primag to, to maintain it as irrigated and with Swenson Hawk and tri-color. And we spoke with a lot of landowners and ranchers, and it was very challenging, because as others have mentioned, that currently there are a lot of landowners and ranchers who are converting to other crops that are more profitable, so finding someone who would stay both irrigated and Swenson is, was very challenging. So when we first met with the Van Flecks, they made it clear that that was part of their intention, was to find ways to continue to remain ranching on, on their ranch as they historically had been. And so over that process, which took approximately two years of working with the agencies, working with biologists, with the various stakeholders, the land trusts, there was a lot of different opportunities for them to change their mind, which they never did. They also had to accept certain limitations on their property. They weren't able to, as obviously by putting in an easement, they could no longer, for, not just for themselves, but their heirs and future folks on the land weren't able to do what they might, his children and others might want to do with that land. And he also had to take certain sacrifices on agricultural practices that were the norm. So applying pesticides and certain things are no longer allowed on that piece of 300 acres that we preserved. And I can tell you that, in my experience over that two years, that I found the Van Flecks to be both dedicated to ranching and agriculture and to the true essence of the habitat and the biological work that, that continues to be done there. So we support it, and I'd be available for any questions you might have.
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Daleman Clark, following Daleman is Jim Paychell.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilman. Yeah, my name is Daleman Clark, and I'm with the IBW Local 340, that's the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, and I'm here to speak in full support of the, the proposal. This amendment brought towards, will go far towards providing a first, first piece of critical habitat, the Van Fleck Ranch, for the South Sacramento HCP. This plan will also assist in jump-starting the Southeast Policy Area. A plan that will deliver the area's largest job center, and the construction will help provide career pathways for many in the building trades. That's from operating engineers to carpenters and so on. And lastly, this is something meaningful. Wait a minute. The plan provides an expedited path to developing much-needed housing units, which is a step towards solving the... towards solving part of the affordable housing crisis that we have in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jim Payshall, following Jim is Judith Lamar.
Hi, Jim Payshall, here from Friends of the Swenson Hawk. We heard about this proposal only very recently from a citizen who contacted us. This proposal is being presented as an addendum to an EIR. Addendum is for simple text changes that don't really make any substantial changes, no substantial impact. But what has actually been presented here is a major mitigation program that is much different from anything that was set forth in the original EIR. It needs a new EIR or a supplemental EIR, at which the information we heard tonight, much of it for the first time, can be presented to the public. Public can review the EIR for 30 days, so can other environmental professionals and the Department of Fish and Game comment on it, and would give us a much more reasoned basis to arrive at whatever decision the council wants to arrive at. I mean, much of this, you know, we heard for the first time, and you heard for the first time. And environmental review process is a much better way to get informed opinions, maybe including some that may be different from what you've heard. With regard to the substance of the proposal, one, I have a lot of respect for the Van Vleek family. I happen to think the SEPA area should develop. The Hawk population does concentrate in the agricultural areas, where there's irrigated agriculture, there's a very good reason for that, because it works. The Hawk population on the eastern periphery of the valley, quite honestly, is pretty sparse. There's one nest tree on the Van Vleek property. There's a, Hawks don't go out there. There's a reason for that also, pertaining to habitat suitability. The proposal is to do a substantial amount of habitat enhancement, and if it works, it might attract more of the Hawk population to the area. But it's, hate to say it, it's experimental biology. Some of the times, these things work, sometimes they don't. Again, this should, the type of thing that should be analyzed in writing in an environmental impact report, subject to review, full review by the public, Department of Fish and Game, other biologists, and of course, by you folks. And I strongly urge that you go that route, do have a supplemental EIR done, and frankly, it's what the law requires. Thank you.
Jim, quick question, just your comment about, I appreciate those comments, based experimental biology, I'm just wondering, how would anybody else's opinion have a greater, you know, be more accurate than what we're hearing tonight?
I haven't heard from the other people. I don't know. You have to, you know, you don't know until you publish the document and find out.
But, I mean, they're just other.
Yeah, the Department, the Department of Fish and Game might have something to say about that.
They did, they did, yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't know that they've heard everything that we heard tonight. And with regard to the issue, you talked about, they had a question about 10 miles forage, 10 miles out versus 20 miles out. Quite simply, the job of the parent of the male hawk, daddy's job is to go out every day and catch enough rodents and mice to feed both the mama hawk, who's sitting on the nests, and all the chicks, who happen to eat a lot of mice, by the way. A hawk that's got to go out, say, 20 miles to catch mice, is only going to bring back half the mice that the hawk can catch from 10 miles out. And that makes a difference as to whether the nest, whether the nest even survives or not. So, that's the importance of it. It really has nothing to do with the, I mean, once they're out of the nest and flying around, it's irrelevant. They go, you know, dozens, hundreds of miles, but nesting season, it's a very different dynamic.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hi.
Members of the council, my name is Judith Lamar. Been active with Friends of the Swenson Hawk for some time now, a couple decades. You received some input tonight that supports our concerns, including Audubon Society, Dale Steele, who's a biologist retired from Fish and Wildlife, and Sean Worth on the South Sacramento HCP. Three minutes, not going to be able to do this. I do want, you know, we heard of Jim Eastep's vision. I'm falling asleep because I heard a bedtime story. That is what we mean by experimental biology. Most of what Jim had to say tonight contradicts things that he's said repeatedly in the past. So, he has changed his vision for Swenson's Hawk in California, but the Department of Fish and Wildlife has not. And Broderick said, "Well, because they don't have time to change their mind." Well, I think there's some other factors involved, and you need to do a supplemental EIR in order to bring that to bear. You're taking the region off in a direction that will risk losing our Swenson's Hawk population. First of all, I want to mention two things. Mitigation must be occupied habitat. There's one Swenson's Hawk nest on that entire Van Vleek 5,000-acre ranch. It's not occupied habitat. It's suitable habitat. It's good for mitigating for Rancho Cordova. It's good for mitigating for the, you know, Sacramento County poor quality habitat. Great, go do it at Van Vleek. But Elk Grove is the center of the highest density population of Swenson's Hawk in the entire Central Valley. Why? Because of the agriculture. When we protect Swenson's Hawk foraging habitat, we protect agriculture in our county. I think the Farm Bureau's a little misled on this. When we protect Swenson's Hawk foraging habitat, we protect agriculture in our county forever. So, don't be misled. Mitigation must be occupied habitat, and we need it where we have the densest nesting densities, the most nests per square mile between Elk Grove and Galt. So, what you're doing, if you adopt this tonight, you're saying, okay, we can take 900 acres of Swenson's Hawk habitat that we would have protected between Elk Grove and Galt, and that will, that's not fragments of habitat isolated here and there. That's 900 acres of habitat that will protect the nesting Swenson Hawks in this area. And instead, you're putting in the Van Vleek Ranch, which is east of Rancho Cordova, and has nothing to do with this ecology. So, I have a lot else to say. And I think we need ample opportunity to discuss the issues. You really heard a huge, long presentation from one point of view, and you really haven't heard the other point of view. I want to say that we need to keep Swenson Hawks in our community. And I have yet to ever hear anybody talk about, we need to preserve large areas of uncultivated, undisturbed grassland in order to keep Swenson Hawks. Why? Because the nesting density in grasslands is so damn low that you'll end up with very few Swenson Hawks, and they won't be flying over I-5 and 99 between Galt and Elk Grove. So, honor our conservation strategy that the community has been putting together for 20 years.
Ma'am, if you can wrap it up, please.
Yeah. So, the kids can have Swenson Hawks in their lives, for their lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no additionals, we have one more speaker. All right, our final speaker is Mr. Josh Wood.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Josh Wood, here on behalf of the Sacramento Region Business Association, and here to support the addendum to the SEPA EIR. We believe this is a creative use that is really the right decision. I mean, it's not been rushed, and it's been studied, and what it comes down to, this is about preserving critical habitat. The Van Vleek Ranch is strategically located between two large existing preserves, and this will help bridge the wildlife areas and create a habitat corridor. It's the right thing to do environmentally, and it helps kick-start and paves the way for us to have what we need, which is the Southeast Policy Area, moving forward. So, it's the right thing to do, and we hope you will consider that and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Seeing that there are no additional speakers, I want to close public comment, and I would like to invite the applicant to come back for rebuttal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, if we can. There are a couple of key issues that were addressed, one of which, and we'll get to them in detail, but one of which was regarding what CEQA requires. If we can, Christian Marsh from Downey Brand is going to speak to that.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. My name is Christian Marsh. I'm a partner at Downey Brand. My expertise is in CEQA and endangered species. I've been working on these issues for about 25 years, including in litigation. I did want to make just a couple of clarifying points. One is on the standard for subsequent review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Under 21166 of CEQA and 15162 of the guidelines, the presumption is actually that you don't do subsequent environmental review unless there are substantial changes in the project which require major revisions in the EIR. What you have before you tonight on mitigation measure 5.47D actually involve very small technical changes to the mitigation. And in fact, we have taken the position, as my analysis, that a revision to that text wasn't actually required, but your staff and legal counsel have done what I think is a conservative approach, and gone ahead and amended that and analyzed it in an addendum. The reason why I say it wasn't required is the mitigation measure specifically cites to compliance with your code 16.130. 130 encompasses both subsections 040, which is the section that deals with consultation with CDFW, it also encompasses subsection 110, which is the section that allows and has preserved for this city council the ability to consider and adopt alternative means of mitigating for Swenson's Hawk, which we have tonight. The 10-mile radius, which has become, you know, much of the debate, you won't find it in the actual mitigation measure, and actually, it's not a requirement of your ordinance, whether under 040 or under 110. What 040 does say is you need to check in with CDFW, and that was certainly their comment, but we believe you have firm authority to adopt the alternative means. And in addition, the under CEQA, there is tremendous discretion that this body has to both interpret mitigation, but also to consider modifications to or even eliminate mitigation if you have substantial evidence showing that the mitigation is no longer necessary. Of course, here, we don't see this as elimination, certainly, and even, as I said before, I don't see it as a true modification of the mitigation that you already had in place. What it does is it really implements what mitigation measure 5.47D ultimately implement, required the applicant to implement. One last thing I would say, and that is, under the substantial evidence standard of review in CEQA, you also have a lot of discretion to choose the opinions of one expert over another. And in this case, you do have comments from CDFW talking about the biological appropriateness. Again, as Jim Eastep said earlier, the 10-mile rule really came, it was somewhat arbitrary and was not tied to the limit on where you can mitigate. It was really tied to when you have to mitigate for loss of a nest. And here, you have Eastep's opinion, you've got the opinion of your biologists, and you have a lot of study and analysis that went into the Van Vleek Ranch and the importance, the regional significance of that as part of the population of Swenson Hawks. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about compliance with CEQA and your code, otherwise, I'm.
Any questions? Lysberg.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Actually, I want to defer to our attorney, and I just want to say if you could weigh in on these comments. Thank you for the comments, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I agree with most of what he said, with one small departure, and I think that's probably what he mentioned, where he referred to staff and your legal counsel taking what he deemed a conservative approach. And I understand his point of view, that this did not require any additional environmental analysis. My opinion is that an addendum is actually the proper method for most of the reasons that Mr. Marsh said with respect to the lack of need to prepare a further environmental document. The reason that I recommend the approval of an addendum, and why it's before you tonight with the support of staff, is because your prior EIR referenced the mitigation measures set forth at Elk Grove Municipal Code, Section 16.130, .040. What that code says is that it generally provides that the Department of Fish and Game has the ability to determine the appropriateness of the mitigation measures. And by doing this addendum, we're taking advantage of another portion of the code, which gives the city council broader discretion to say that you can adopt mitigation measures that are not necessarily require a determination of suitability by Department of Fish and Game. Instead, the city council, under Elk Grove Municipal Code 16.130, .110, the city council has the discretion to offer and approve, quote, "other means," end quote, of mitigation, so long as it's compliant with CEQA, and that's what we're doing here. I think the distinction that I'm making gets all of us to the exact same point. I just take a slightly path to get there, slightly different path to get there than Mr. Marsh does, but we end up in the exact same place either way.
Okay. And just to clarify, the former language, I understand that's what was inherited from the county?
It was similar to what was, yes. It was a county language that was ultimately adopted by the City of Elk Grove a number of years ago.
And that, not that this matters, but just other jurisdictions who have since incorporated, they changed theirs, but we never changed ours?
I believe that's correct, although I haven't studied every other jurisdiction. I've been focusing on what Elk Grove requires.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Excellent. Mr. Camillus.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Jerry Camillus, of Suez Oak Grove LLC. I'm the managing member of the applicant. And first of all, I think the speakers you heard this evening would probably all agree that this concept, whether it's on the Van Vleek Ranch or some other ranch, is a concept that regionally, we need to support. And we have a unique opportunity here, and especially at Elk Grove. I consider Elk Grove being a top-class city, and the Southeast Policy Area is an example of that. And I don't have to go through all the attributes of the Southeast Policy Area, but it is a leadership project in this region, and there's no reason to take a leadership effort on mitigation. We've been involved in mitigation. I'm not a biologist, I'm not a rancher, I'm, but I've been involved for the last 20 years of thousands of acres set aside in habitat conservation plans. The first ag conservation plan in 2000, associated to the East Franklin Pacific Plan. I've been involved with numerous programs, you know, with regards to the Hawks and as well as the garter snakes and many other species. In that 20 years, this is the most compelling mitigation plan I have ever seen as a person who implements projects. And as you know, we're on the verge of implementing SEPA, and I think the gentleman who just left would have been pleased for me to say that, that spoke earlier this meeting. And this particular plan, and its unique characteristics, a once-in-a-lifetime experience, as you heard from many speakers, is something that we can tell the story about Elk Grove. We can tell the story about Southeast Policy Area. The employers that come into the Southeast Policy Area will know what we did and how their particular project or property or business is a contributor towards that effort. The individual residents will understand that leadership in Elk Grove has set aside this acreage, a substantial acreage, as part of their. this acreage, a substantial acreage, as part of their commitment for the environment. And I encourage you to accept and approve the recommendations from staff, as I think this is going to be one of the most meaningful steps in implementing SEPA that this council may ever have. I'm available for questions.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead. Councilman Detrick.
Jerry, you've done a lot of development, not only in the region, but other places throughout California, correct?
Yes.
So the property that the Van Vleeks have, if that were not to go into mitigation, would that be low or high-level property for development, considering the proximity it is to everything else?
Well, given it's thousands of acres, you know, certainly some of it would need to be set aside, but the substantial portion adjacent to the existing development of Ranch and Merida, I would consider as prime development opportunity. It may take a few years to go through the process, but ultimately, that area could be ultimately developed. And the existing facilities, the sewer plant and the water plant that are out there potentially could be expanded.
Because, you know, just looking at this, is there potentially, my guess is there's millions of dollars at risk one way or another. If you went with development, I'm sure it would be millions of dollars more than going for using his mitigation link, correct?
Yes. And, you know, I couldn't tell you the magnitude, but I do know this. I've known the Van Vleek family for several decades, and I could tell you that they are so committed to agriculture. They are so committed to make every effort that this ranch continues for another, not only 160 years, but in perpetuity. And Stan and his family are working hard to ensure that that happens. And again, you know, it's incredible to be part of that process, and it's more incredible to be able to say that our project here in Elk Grove provided this area, this really unique and, again, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to meet the city's requirements, but yet be able to tell an awesome story that will go on for generations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else? That's good. All right. I want to declare public hearing closed, and council deliberation in direction. Gentlemen? Go ahead. Councilman Detrick.
You know, I heard a lot of good information from both sides. Jim, relative to your, lack of better words, your story that you have today versus what you had 30 years ago, I would imagine over 30 years, you maybe learned a little more than you knew back then, huh? So, I mean, I would assume that, you know, your story would change. I would expect that over time. You know, I heard a lot of interesting statements tonight. A unique, special, new, innovative opportunity of a lifetime. I personally have had the opportunity with the development that I live in, much smaller, obviously, it's only roughly a 50-acre complex, but there's duplicates of what we've done all over the state of California, and I've seen what it does to create its own habitat. And so for looking at this project, you know, I mean, I look at it as a world-class master plan Swenson Hawk community opportunity, with having a river, lake, pasture creeks, alfalfa. I understand they talked about adding trees, if I'm not mistaken, I can't remember if I read it or in some conversations, it was adding cottonwood trees, I believe. Is that right?
That's right. Yeah.
And then in the grasslands. You know, I appreciate the Friends of the Swenson Hawk. You guys have been tremendous supporters of the Hawk. There's no question of that. And I think the council here has always tried to be friends of yours as well. And I think that this is a very unusual circumstance. I know you guys have a very, very strong opinion on that. I think this is an opportunity that's going to be unbelievable as it progresses. It might take a decade for, as the trees develop and everything gets done, but I think over the next decade, you're going to see a huge population increase in the Swenson Hawk environment. So I'm going to support this recommendation tonight.
Okay. Chair, Vice Mayor?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I remember being part of conversations about how to protect Swenson Hawks since the early 2000s. And it's interesting to me that it's taken this long to get to a recognition that in order to protect the species for the long term, to have something as big as what we're talking about, combined with the HCP and what Westerveld and others are doing, that, you know, when you look at mitigation for wetlands and vernal pools, if you look at, obviously, the HCPs are a great example, there's a recognition about putting large pieces of land together so you're not going at it a little bit at a time, and so making a more sustainable environment for these species. And so here we have, you know, it's been said already, an innovative and a unique opportunity for us to do this for the Swenson Hawk. And I also appreciate all the comments tonight, both for and against. And like any, anything else we've heard, whether it's, you know, debates over preservation of fish or preservation of hawk or vernal pools, there's always debate biologically, scientists on both sides. And so us as human species, we're left to apply our best judgment in order to move ahead and do what we think is best. I think on why we're doing, well, a couple of things. One, nesting versus foraging habitat. So nesting, if we examine what we're doing for the property, providing, we're trying to accommodate, up here on this dais, we're trying to accommodate another great need, and that is there are housing challenges. And this, the project that is forthcoming, that's already approved in terms of zoning, that will provide, that range of housing will be provided, that's one challenge we're trying to meet. So the likelihood of nests in an area of your neighborhoods, I mean, you see it once in a while, but are they better there or are they better in an area where they could thrive and have adequate and appropriate foraging habitat for the species? I would argue that it makes more sense that they're away from people and cars and density, medium-density, low-density, and high-density homes. And then finally, I think, to the speaking of who would we be, by extension, partnering with, the Van Vleek Ranch, you know, obviously, it's been talked about, spoken about, over 160 years, Van Vleek family's been in this area. And then my own personal experience with Stan Van Vleek, working with him on the Air Quality and Transportation Collaborative, early 2000s, I can tell you his passion for preserving agriculture in open space has not changed in over the decade that I've known him. So it's, I, you know, if we're going to experiment, to use Mr. Paschal's term earlier, if we're going to experiment with something like this, I couldn't think of a better partner to do that with. So I, too, am going to support this project and appreciate everybody's work on all of this. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to agree with my former colleague, Paul Lindsay, that if this is a shift in policy for the city of Elk Grove, we need to fix our outdated policy. If it's relating back to old ways of thinking, we need to make sure we have a larger discussion if this is going forward. Specific to this instance, though, this was not city-initiated. This was an instance of a landowner with a unique opportunity contacting a developer with a unique need, and the two of them coming up with a plan that then now they came to staff and said, is there a way to accomplish this goal? And, but I think if we are, if we do see logic in this overall thinking, then we need to adjust our overarching language accordingly. You know, I said to the vice mayor after the gentleman, the former director of Fish and Wildlife, was talking about a dinner bell when they fled the properties, if you want to see raptors en masse, come out when the combines fire up. Because, as was said, they're not there for the alfalfa, they're there for the rodents and the snakes and the things that flush out when the hay is being harvested. And so I appreciate, first of all, that aspect of why they locate next to agriculture, but as was said by Mr. Eastep, and that's why I asked him this question, the hawks were here long before people were farming this land. And so they, obviously, there was something that they came up here and fed upon and foraged prior to agricultural use as being here. And so I think it's important that as we look at sort of the long-range vision, and somebody mentioned their grandkids will be the ones to determine whether it was smart or not, I would go even longer than that. You know, it's not just about supporting a hawk site or a foraging site, it's about supporting the whole biodynamic ecosystem that goes along with that. So when you have 5,000 contiguous acres in close proximity to another 5,000 acres of preserve, in close proximity to 30,000 acres of preserve, now you're starting to create something that's sustainable for not maybe this generation of hawk, but for the hawk species, not, as was said, those hawks, but for the hawks. And so I think that makes a lot of good sense. And I think that to be able to preserve a 900-acre swath within a larger preserve area makes a lot more sense than preserving 10, 80-acre swaths or 40, 20-acre swaths, when you're talking about not just the hawk, but the full, again, ecosystem that has to go to support that. So I appreciate that there was some urgency with respect to the decision the Van Vleek family had to make on their operations going forward, and I want to thank them for making the decision to try and stay in ag and keep that ranching operation viable for the next generation that's in the audience and hopefully their future generations that aren't even thought of yet. And I also appreciate the Farm Bureau being here, because, you know, the reality is, is that when, while we do something that is seen as beneficial for the hawk, it's not necessarily seen, it's not beneficial for the family that can't afford to farm that land anymore, or that lost out on the opportunity to put in a crop that allows their operation to go forward. It's one thing to say this is what you ought to do, but it's another thing when you're sitting around the dinner table trying to figure out how to make the ends meet. And that's why the family farm is vastly disappearing. So I support this proposal tonight, but I do think we need to have a larger conversation if this type of activity is the direction we want to go.
Agreed.
Excellent. First, I want to thank you to all the speakers who came out. You know, I appreciate the input. I appreciate the dialogue that we've had tonight. It certainly is, you know, informative and for the experts who provided, you know, insight on what does it really mean, the 10-mile versus the 18, the foraging versus nesting. One thing I want to, you know, share with the public and with my colleagues is that I'm an avid outdoorsman. I've spent years of my life spending fortune camping and hiking in the wilderness. So I'm very sensitive to these types of efforts as we humans encroach on natural habitat. I, knowing that, I took an opportunity to tour the Van Vleek Ranch with Stan, and it is impressive and it is overwhelming in terms of the acreage that's out there. Now, that being the case, what I was really hung up on is the 10-mile radius and the genesis of that, whether it's actually a rule or a policy, and I saw nothing of that. That being the case, we heard from the expert, Swanson Hawk expert, who said that that was a number that just somehow made its way in and became something that everyone referred to. That was important to me and critical, being that I want a better understanding as to the distance in which this hawk would forage and would forage with a nest. And so that was real critical. The answers to my questions were delivered tonight, and, you know, I feel comfortable with it. Not only that, but, you know, one of the other aspects that I think is real key and important to a city like Elk Grove is we want to be innovative. We want to think outside the box, and we want to be leaders. And this unique partnership, this opportunity, is something that we can demonstrate to the state of California and, you know, other states as well, that it's not about setting, you know, 100 acres aside, it's about setting an ecosystem so that, you know, the hawks can actually thrive. And I truly believe in that. You know, it makes logical sense when you look at the global map as to the land that's already preserved and how this is going to impact the ecosystem, and it would benefit the hawk. I think this is one of those things that, you know, in the long term, it would benefit the Swanson Hawk. So I would be in support of it as well. So, all right. So we call the vote?
I'll move to adopt the resolution, adopting an addendum to the certified EIR for the Southeast Policy Strategic Plan.
Okay, you got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? Next item.
Take us to Section 10, our regular agenda, action items and recommendations, starting with item 10.1, we should consider introduction of an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Title 16, Chapter 16.50, regarding flood damage prevention.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be able to, I'd be willing to waive staff presentation, go straight to a couple of comments?
All right.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Thanks. I'll attach.
Okay. Want to open for public comment? I have one speaker sign up to speak. Mr. Josh Wood, come on up. Was that on the other item? Okay. Seeing that there are no members of the public sign up to speak, want to close public comment, council deliberation in direction.
I will move to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only, an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Title 16, Chapter 16.50, flood damage prevention.
Second.
Okay, got a motion second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? Next item.
Take us to item 10.2, which is to consider a resolution approving the Civic Center landscaping and pedestrian trails study schematic design concept and provide direction to staff regarding the site's solar array location and integration within the schematic design concept.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. My name is John Griffin, and I'm one of the engineers of the Public Works Department. Before you tonight is approval of our schematic design concept for the Civic Center landscape and pedestrian trails project. This has been in the works over several months. We've had several meetings with both you as council members and the public. Most recently, we had a meeting just last Thursday with the residents of the Park Gate community where we presented this final concept. And there was about roughly 25 members of the community there, and capitolists to state that there was unanimous support of the concept plan that we have presented before you tonight. And we, I believe we still even have a few of those residents that were there at the meeting last Thursday and here also to express their support for this project. So one of the things that we shared with them that was new was a solar array, and that's one of the items that we're looking for some feedback on as well, is we're proposing a small solar array in the northeast corner of the project. So with that, I'd like to introduce also Marco Esposito with SWA Group, and he'll go through some of the changes and some of the facility and the comments that we received, and provide you a final presentation of how the project is proposed to look. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council member. If I can have a second to bring up our show. Let's see here. Where is the full screen? So I'm excited to present progress to you. We're just ended schematic design, and that's about a third of the way through the design process. When I was in front of you in March, we were about six of the way through with the concept design. Today is schematic design. The Civic Center Park, as you know, is an amazing The Civic Center Park, as you know, is an amazing 50-acre parcel that you've set aside for community use. In the northern portion, this is Civic Center Drive, this is Elk Grove Boulevard, Big Horn in the foreground. The northern portion is currently under construction with the Aquatic Center and the Outdoor Commons Project, about 20 acres. And so what I'll be discussing today is the southerly 30 acres that's just south of the Aquatic Center, all the way down to Lots Park Parkway. The Park Gate neighborhood is on the east side and the Water Agency water facility is in the, in the corner there. You can see that the land is a unique piece of land. The, there was a certain amount of farmland that was in the northern part of the site. The middle part of the site was a natural low point that became a stock pond for the former farmsteads. And in the very southern part of the site, you can see pistachio orchards remaining even though they haven't been tended for a dozen years. So there's a lot of great character on the site. I know we've talked about the site analysis before and the quality of the site. And as we've discussed before, we've really wanted to build on that wonderful character that's there with a light touch, extend the connectivity from Phase 1 through the remaining 30 acres and allow people to enjoy the site by strolling and getting out into nature. These are three kind of highlights that I wanted to present to you initially before we get into more detail. From the south end of the Aquatic Center, there's a certain amount of grass, great meadow, and we're extending that out for a total of three acres of, of irrigated grass surrounded by this walkway with a certain amount of wildflowers in the distance. There's a playscape that's alongside that. And then you can see the idea of filling with water, the former stock pond would be beyond that. So this is, this is the most amenitized and most maintained portion of this 30 acres as we see it. And then in the former stock pond area, introducing this idea as discussed last time and with you and per your direction to have year-round water. We've done infiltration tests since we've, we're with you. There's just a small amount of infiltration, as you can imagine, that wouldn't have been a valuable stock pond had it not been like that. But it's about a quarter inch a day of infiltration, so it holds water well. And with some shallow pumping at night, say four hours, you could kind of top up and have a year-round water and have this kind of a wetland pond in the former stock pond area. And then in addition to that, we would have a certain amount of trails. And there's some great kind of spaces, sometimes the existing valley oaks are close enough that you create kind of these wonderful canopies to stroll through and jog and run through. Again, sort of a glimpse of this idea of a year-round pond on the right. So with those sort of highlights, a bit more detail, with you and with the community, we shared two concepts, one that had a few, a few less amenities and one that had a few more amenities. Again, with most of the development, most of the amenities on the, north of the, of the stock pond in this kind of great meadow area, and then a matter of whether you fill the water seasonally in the stock pond or year-round. And then also, at that time, an idea about do you celebrate the agriculture in the orchard area? But based on the community's input and your direction, we have developed the current plan, which again, has most of the amenities north of the pond in this great meadow area, a year-round pond that's relatively subtle with a few things like an overlook and a way for the, kind of in the kids' area for people to get down to the water and a boardwalk, but relatively subtle in terms of development. And as you go to the south, basically leaving the orchard area as it is and, and just having less and less development as you move south from Civic Center Drive. This is the kind of current condition, this past winter in the sort of the meadow area. This was the initial sketch that we brought to you. And generally, the ingredients were well-received and this is how we've developed it and how it's presented in the details of the schematic design. The pond, again, in winter looked like this. We brought this to you and comments ranged from, could there be more naturalistic setting, less hardscape, even though there's the main path that runs kind of inland parallel to Big Horn along that side? Definitely have it be more about habitat restoration, wildlife, and less about boating. And so this is kind of where that particular image wound up. And then in the ag area, at the time, we were wondering about making a bigger deal out of that, but that was the wrong direction. So we kind of focused more on this ability to have trails, kind of rock dust trails and just get people a chance to go for a half-mile jog, a stroll, and really engage this beautiful site. And so in detail, we've developed the schematic design drawings and have gone out to the site many times with these drawings and kind of seen it from different angles and been under certain trees and just kind of really tried to get the, the paths to be in the right place and head towards the right things. The great meadow, this kind of red shape is the approximate extent of the Phase 1 that's being built. And so that would be the northern boundary of this Phase 2 park project. So extending the great lawn, the idea of having sort of a wildflower area adjacent to it, having a fitness court area and a playscape area and a picnic overlook and a way for people to get down to the, to the pond with some stairs there. And also, one thing that we added most recently in talking with the city, cities' project managers, a small restroom for this area, because this would be sort of the most actively used part of this area, and a few more picnic tables, so there's some picnic tables and barbecues that are in this area. As you know, the master plan for the overall Civic Center site included the ability to expand parking when Phase 1 opens up. We'll see what the demand is, but there's, built into the plan is the ability to expand parking both from the Civic Center lot as well as the Big Horn lot that's accessed right off of this work that's currently ongoing, that Denali entrance. In terms of the fitness, it's, there's a lot of activity around kind of this outdoor CrossFit, those kinds of things. And people gather and they really have some very interesting kind of outdoor equipment these days. So there's a potential place like that on the half-mile jogging loop. An ability to get from the kind of kids' play area with some stone seat stairs down to the pond is what this section and plan suggests. There's a picnic overlook idea, if I can just back up for a second. The playscape is an interesting idea of having a series of kind of nets that are really kind of grander. It's not really meant to be like a neighborhood park, it's meant to be really amazing kind of setting that kids can, sort of almost adventure playground, a little bit, you know, tidier than a full adventure playground, but not like a neighborhood park that's with the very standard play equipment. A picnic overlook that would be on pilings in the pond. And then a certain amount of other picnic areas. It's, you know, it's, it's, 30 acres is vast. I mean, it really is an immersive setting with wonderful places to be throughout it. So then, if we look at the pond area, if we fill it with water, which is what we say we want to do, we're going to sculpt it, we're going to excavate some material to make the water, the water depth deeper, sort of in the three-foot, three-and-a-half-foot range. Right now, it would be, you know, it'd be less than that. And so we'll have some, some soil that we're borrowing there that we can do a landform up in the northeast of the site. Up along the Park Gate neighbors, we can add some gentle landform up to say four or five feet tall. And as John alluded, we're looking at a photovoltaic array that would be right alongside the water treatment plant. So the water treatment plant is surrounded by a, a block wall and there's a certain amount of solar panels that would allow the whole park to be net zero. So for the demand for the Aquatic Center, for the commons, and then probably the relatively minor load notwithstanding a future building for the, the rest of the park, this, this basically on a year-round basis generates enough power to offset that. So we think that's an exciting opportunity. And given that we're showing it tucked in up against the water facility and into this kind of rolling landform on the north end, which, which, which would be the kind of location that you would put the borrow material from the pond, we think it creates a wonderful kind of an edge to the public realm from, from Big Horn. Again, if we go back to the pond on the west side, just south of Denali, is the idea of a long-term location for a children's museum or a nature center. In the community meetings, this received a lot of support, but it's, it's probably not a near-term funding thing, it might be a midterm funding thing, but it's an idea that we've located a site for. And then this main path that connects from intersection to intersection, from Lots and Big Horn all the way up to Big Horn and Civic Center is a way that people walking from the surrounding neighborhoods would walk into the site. If you want to go to aquatics with your family, you just walk in that way into the site. Or if you want to walk through the site to the future library and theater or to the community center, it's kind of a park, in-park backbone. And that would be lit. And there's also one east-west 10-foot concrete path that runs along what used to be the old farmstead road that's nominally there, people use it right now, and that would also be lit. Everything else wouldn't be lit right now. We met with, with police and that was kind of their sense. They thought maybe, maybe have a few motion sensor lights in a few other areas, but generally, in terms of having steady lighting, those were the two path areas that we would do that. The ability to fill the pond, now that the, now that Elk Grove has been developing and each individual neighborhood around the park has its own drainage system, there isn't as much water coming to this low point. And so the idea of kind of filling it each night, sort of topping it up, would be with a shallow ag well. That well would be 1,000 feet away from the Sacramento County Water Agency wellhead that's on-site, that's located right here. And the property's big enough that we can easily meet that kind of distance requirement that the water agency has. So this is an idea about having that shallow well there and pumping as needed into the pond every night to, to fill it up. And again, along the western kind of main north-south path, especially in front of the building pad there, there may be a certain amount of seat stairs going in the water there as well. This particular area is one of the few areas of the pond where there's a little bit of fill involved to really have that corridor go through and keep the trees that are kind of right hard up against the lake right now, the, the kind of pond environment. That's what those seat stairs show. And then on the east side, because the, the landform, the depression goes all the way up to the back of the homes, we show this boardwalk that's, you know, 100, 150 feet away from the back of the homes. And per the comments last time, we're showing this at 10 feet wide so that you can kind of easily get by each other, people with a stroller and somebody jogging by. Also, in a pinch, you could have a patrol car or a light maintenance vehicle that can use the, the park's walk network to get around. We've done a first pass of grading, this would need to be refined a few more notches as we go forward, but the idea would be to balance on-site, again, have a deeper pond for better water quality in addition to moving the water around, filtering it, aerating it, and then also the idea of having a, a modest high point to screen the water treatment plant and also give a little bit of a enclosure and separation to the northern part of the Park Gate neighborhood. We've carefully looked at all the trees, we're keeping all the valley oaks that are healthy and all the pistachio trees. There's a few non-native trees such as eucalyptus that per discussions we had last time would be removed. And then we would be adding more trees for more habitat and more shade and using the native trees that are on the Heritage Tree Fund list that the city has. So really having a, you know, both allowing people to enjoy the site and, and enhancing the habitat by using native tree species and also, once you clean up the ground plane from the modest kind of debris that's left over, there's a certain amount of barbed wire fences and things like that from the previous farm. Not much, it's, it's quite a clean site, but there's some cleanup. We are also looking at re-establishing some areas of native grassland in addition to the meadow and the kind of the tended Central Valley wildfire field. Alvin and John wanted me to keep it short, given how long the meetings go. As you can imagine, I love talking about this, so I will wrap it up shortly. And I'll just show some images to give some quick imagery to this, concrete paths, the stone dust trails, informal furniture, in some cases, the picnic furniture, kind of strong, modern things that are very natural, some flexible meadow as we talked about, the great meadow. You can set up frisbees and informal volleyball. Great seasonality, as you know, right now, it's, it's dormant in, in summer and that's, that's the way the native landscape is, so we'll have some of that. And that'll be exciting to see the seasonality, beautifully green in winter and spring, and then it browns out in, in summer. And then again, this idea of introducing wildflowers in a tended area that's adjacent to the great meadow. The, we're really excited about the perennial pond opportunity and building on the success of the Kasumnas Preserve is adding the ability to experience that on this site, a certain amount of overlook, a bit of bringing down hardscape to the pond. And then the idea of a future building, not currently being, not, you know, not likely to go forth in the next few years, but sort of midterm children's museum or nature center. This idea of a playscape that's something special, kind of a really regional draw. And then the, kind of the new generation of fitness equipment. So with that, I'm happy to answer your questions.
Any questions?
Looks great.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. I was wondering, I, we received a email earlier from, from a resident and she had a, she had a lot of suggestions actually, and some of them I think are accounted for in here, such as the mounding. But there was a comment about homelessness and how that might, if you, if you considered that. And then, secondly, a meditation type of environment, you know, where, like a gardens type of things where people can meditate. Have you considered any of those options?
The, you know, in, in helping you with this project, we've been to the site maybe a dozen times now and walked it extensively. And I think that probably you're going to get more homeless if it's in a completely undeveloped state than if it's a park. If it's a park, we're going to be inviting people to, to jog and walk and stroll, you're going to have a certain amount of staff interaction with the park and maintenance. So I think it's probably heading in the right direction to make it, to bring it a kind of into the, into the community. So I think that'll help. Is it going to totally avoid it? No. Still need all the things that we do in public streets and, and public parks everywhere. In terms of meditative space, the great thing is that you've got hundreds of valley oaks there and you kind of create your own personal room and subrooms and the native, both the existing grasses and the native grassland that this would be restored to, you can stroll through it, you can walk to it and you can get to certain places. We haven't specifically thought about that, but I could, I could easily imagine someone, you know, finding kind of a, kind of a quieter corner and making that your own kind of special meditative zone. that your own kind of special meditative zone. You could potentially work with park staff over the years and mow some of the native grassland over time, if there was a kind of a contingent that wanted to use a certain area for that. So.
Okay. Thank you. I like the fitness equipment, too. Thanks.
Councilman Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, despite Alvin's gentle interference, I'll go ahead and move the 10 o'clock rule.
You got a motion second here.
You got to call for the question.
Oh, that's right. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, abstention?
Okay, thank you. Mark, great presentation. I mean, obviously, it's getting late, but I can tell you're passionate about it. I have a couple of questions. The first is, does deepening the pond, will that affect that low infiltration rate that you were talking about?
We don't think so, because the geotech that did the report for all of us looked at a few locations, including the recent tie-in. The Phase One has a, we tied it into this pond area and dug a little bit deeper there. And so one of the infiltration tests was done at this kind of new, you know, approximating this new lower level.
Okay, great. Second question is, one of my concerns, and it kind of relates to what the Vice Mayor was just asking about, but with respect to the sort of non-developed, very southern portion, in addition to homelessness, which I think is pretty visible and easy to determine, I'm worried, and I noticed on one of the schematics, it showed some picnic tables being placed along the pathways down there. And if you go by the site today, there's a lot of graffiti on the trees and different things and some trash. And I think, I don't know if it's kids or homeless or whom, but people are using it, I think, probably for drug activity. And I'd be worried that it would create an issue for our PD. Do we have any plans to address that, and how we would sort of be diligent about keeping undesirable activity out of that area, both during the daytime hours, but especially once the sun starts to go down?
I think that we would be meeting with PD on kind of an ongoing basis if we move the design forward. And again, as I said, we've already met with PD maybe a month ago. I think it's a combination of kind of coming to some sense of, you know, kind of how much we want to invite people in the park by lighting. By having light, you kind of make it possible for people to be in the park more easily. And we've sort of limited that to the two main paths as an idea. And that was an idea because you may have events at the community center in the evening, and people want to go for a stroll back. You may have, in wintertime, high school kids that have after-school band or some, you know, athletic practice and are walking home at 6:00 at night when it's already kind of dark. So there was an idea about having some backbone connectivity that's lit. Then, the question is, do you turn that off at a certain time to make it maybe less interesting to be in the park? And then, in addition to that, you can use motion centers, sensors to give kind of the police and anybody that's watching, the cameras, there'll be cameras throughout the park, a sense of if there's activity in an area that's kind of unwanted. So there's a couple strategies that are cooking, but I think we would want to meet with.
So you do have cameras planned?
We do, we do. I don't think that we have the markup back from the police department, but we talked about having cameras near all the major entrances, the kind of crosswalk entrances to the park. And as you know, in Phase One, there's a dozen cameras that are outdoors.
Maybe the idea would be at any congregation areas, have a camera as well.
I can tell you that our subdivision down in Galt, we have a path along one of their drainage creeks, and they required that we install cameras along that path. And those cameras busted down, I think, before we even got the first house built. Something to think about. I like the idea, but we're going to have to do something to make sure that they're protected. And then the last thing that I want to ask Mark is, I love the concept. I love the layout. I think you heard the direction, and you came back with something that it really is going to be a special place. But I got to tell you, in looking at the staff report, I get a little bit of sticker shock at over 17 and a half million dollars. Is there a way to pare that back? I mean, I looked at, you called out a lot of concrete paths. I know that asphalt is cheaper than concrete. Do we, would that make a significant amount to bring that dollar down? Or would you lose out on that because asphalt requires more long-term maintenance than concrete does? I mean, have you kind of analyzed ways that you might pare down that $11 million construction cost?
I think the way that we've been talking about it within the team is that you have this backbone of walks and trails. That's kind of the first part. Then, if you do the pond, there's a certain amount of money there, pumping, recirculating, filtering, sculpting it. And then there's these amenities, right? Whether we do a playscape, whether we do an overlook, whether you do a boardwalk. So there's kind of these different layers of backbone, pond, and amenity. So I think there is a natural kind of a menu item that we can work with you on what the priorities are. And I know that the city's exploring funding, appropriate kind of funding levels now, realistic funding levels. And we would come back to you with some ideas about how to balance the two, and for your kind of guidance as to whether that makes sense. So I think that what we wound up doing was fleshing this idea out and putting a budget to it, and that's the number that you see. And of course, the 17 million is a complete project budget, including permitting and soft costs and all that.
Right, sure, sure. Well, I mean, I can support the issue before us tonight, because it's just checking the CEQA box and approving the concept, but that 17 million sticker price is pretty large. I had a thought, and I forgot. Oh, and that doesn't even include the solar array, which I think is a wonderful idea. If we can make this whole project, including the Commons and the Aquatic, as net zero, I mean, that's really cutting edge, in my estimation. And so, but that's not included in this price.
Proposal for the solar array, though, is it would be no cost. We'd do a power purchase agreement.
Oh, great. I like free. That's good news.
Perfect. Yeah. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, good. Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay. Want to open public comment? We have Mr. Keith Smothers, who is here. Come on down.
First of all, I'd like to thank the city for taking the time and the energy and the effort to listen to the members of the community about this project. And it wasn't just one person. It was many of you. And it was comments that, from many of you. I mean, and it, I personally had, excuse me, I had calls with many of you and conversations. And some of them were rather passionate. And you know that I'm rather passionate about this project. And I'm grateful, and I appreciate, I appreciate the project, and I support this project, and it's beautiful. And I think the best part about it is, it's not about one person. It's, quite frankly, this is going to be a project and a place that people don't even understand that they're going to enjoy it, in ways that they're going to enjoy it. And it's going to, such as the Van Vleck property, I can appreciate that. I have expressed that. I'm an ardent animal lover and wild birder. And this property supports a wild bird population. And as crazy as an incident it was, my family and I, we were having dinner, and we watched a hawk take a bird in my backyard last week. I mean, that's the kind of wild population we have in the area. And I think you'll get the continued support of the community to support and be good stewards, you know. Councilman Hume, you asked about, you asked about the garbage. And in fact, Mayor Lee, you, thank you for coming out and supporting our cleanup. We actually, we clean that mess up again. And you, in fact, are right. It is an area that does hold concern. And I would like to talk with somebody within the city about doing an immediate signposting or something to show that it's not an area to be used for that kind of activity, because it is used for drugs. And we cleaned up quite a bit of paraphernalia. And my concern is fire at this point. Fire, and this project is worthless. And so, but I did, I just wanted to thank the city for taking the time and the effort. And I think our, I think, I think the community, and I think Elk Grove's going to enjoy it for years to come if it is, in fact, passed. Thank you.
Could you give us maybe just a quick minute of all the different wildlife you've seen out there since you've been there for a couple of years now, right?
I can say that I probably have spent more time out there than many. Obviously, hawks. We have seen coyote, obviously, all kinds of snakes, the variants of birds. I have spoken about during the wintertime, I hate to see the eucalyptus go, but I understand why they need to go. But I hold patents on hummingbird feeders, and they are near and dear to me. And I saw one of the craziest events that I've ever seen in a cold snap. I saw hundreds of hummingbirds out there congregating in the eucalyptus one year. So it does harbor a significant, wild turkeys, we hear the wild turkeys in the morning right now. It does hold a wild, I mean, rabbits, it goes skunks. I appreciate them all, you know, good and bad. I appreciate them all. But it's just an incredible holding place for all kinds of wild diversity. And again, Councilman Hume, you made reference, you know, the holding ponds, you know, an escape place. That can't be underestimated, you know, because it would be the most incredible sight if we were able to attract the cranes, you know, to land here. You know, if that happened, that would be an event upon events. And, but I had spoken with Mr. Wong about reaching out to the Audubon Society, about seeking a grant for wild bird, wild birding homes or houses, so we can attract more wild birds, you know, for nesting and breeding. And I even spoke about, you know, for insect control, bat houses. We have, I had spoken with Mayor Lee, we have one of the most, we have one of the largest wild bat or bat populations in the United States, right here in Elk Grove. And if you watch a football game at Casunus Oaks, you'll see the bats, you know, chasing the insects at night. And if we can attract them over here, I mean, there's your, there's your insect control right there. So, but no, it's an incredible piece of property. And I'm grateful to be here, and I've been grateful that you listened to me and others.
Thanks for being a champion of that area, because you and I met, that was about four or five years ago, I guess, originally on this. And the excitement you had there matches the excitement you have tonight, and I love it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks for your engagement on this, Keith. It's good to see you.
Thank you. And thank you for reading past all my excitement, because I get a little excitable at times, as many of you know.
I was just going to say, you know, I really appreciate your calm excitement. That really helps. And, you know, joking aside, I appreciate you. Every opportunity that you had, you've approached the city respective representatives and actually communicated with them. And you've been a tremendous advocate for the community. So, you know, thank you for your work.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Kevin Jones.
Good evening. I am Kevin Jones. I've been in this community for 26 years. I've seen it grow from just a lot of farmland. I live over in the area that the gentleman was talking about, this proposed park. I like that idea. The only concerns I have is, I think we just need just a simple, plain park, though, not with the water. Water brings in mosquitoes. And I think this park, just my idea of the type of park is more of a leisure-type park, where just small, low-grass area, no basketball courts. We don't need to attract a lot of kids coming and just, you know, just actually turn the park into something that we do not desire to have. The other thing, a proposal is probably going to have to have more parking if it's going to be more like a leisure park, because you've got the Aquatic Center right there next to it. But basically, that's just my concern. I mean, that's something that I think we really need to have. It's just a mini leisure park area, just for people to go have a little picnic, just, you know, just have a good time with their families. So that's just my concern and my input. Thank you.
Glad you, just want to add, there's actually a bunch of those little parks everywhere in the community. In fact, we're approaching close to 100 parks in the city of Elk Grove. Yeah, I'm excited about this particular project because it's something that's a little bit unique, as opposed to some of the ones that we've commonly been seeing. So I appreciate your comment, but my feeling is that this is really something spectacular that we're embarking on. So, thank you, though.
Thank you.
Mark, just a question on about the mosquitoes. Did we talk about mosquito fish or something like that in there? I remember we, I thought we mentioned something like that.
So, yeah, I think that, you know, we're going to look at the biology of the lake in terms of, you know, what's the maintenance regime in terms of not having much fertilizer come in, so you don't have algae. We're going to recirculate the water and filter it and aerate it. So obviously, mosquitoes is another, you know, problem subset. People have talked about mosquito fish. So the solution isn't totally set yet, but it's definitely on our radar to think about it.
Looking forward to hearing more. Thank you.
Mark, you mentioned about the percolation on the lake.
Yes.
So is there any clay that you guys have been finding when you've been excavating out there or doing samplings?
Yeah, there's a lot of clay in the soil.
Because I know typically, if you can line it with clay, it reduces the, there's other additives they can put in the soil that help firm it up to stop filtration on it.
Right, right. Well, we're trying to look for that balance of having it be naturalistic in terms of, one of the things that keeps algae down is when you have a certain amount of vegetation within the water that can, you know, take advantage of the nutrients in the water, that are both from, you know, animals being in the water and any minor amount of fertilizer that's coming from the more maintained parts of the park. So we don't necessarily want to line it with something that's, you know, totally impervious, but we obviously don't want to have it be too pervious so that you're constantly pumping. So we're happy with what we're finding, but I think Alvin has the idea to do a few more infiltration tests as we move forward.
Perfect.
And just to mention, the one gentleman mentioned that he wouldn't want to have a basketball court, so that it doesn't currently have a basketball court in it.
I actually want a basketball court.
All right, thank you. Seeing that there are no additional speakers sign up to speak, we want to close public comment and council deliberation in direction.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I just want to say, obviously, this is at a completely different scale, but when you think about Central Park or Golden Gate Park, or even more locally, Land Park, you know, you have to set aside these spaces that are for different uses than the traditional sports parks. There's a need for that, but there's also a need just for having sort of nature in close to your urbanized areas, I personally believe. And that's why, you know, we've created a policy to have our drainage ways be as aesthetic as they are functional, so that they sort of keep that natural feel close by, so you can get by. There's something, for me at least, that it just, and I know Mr. Smothers feels the same way, obviously, when you hear him talk from the podium there, but there's something that just enriches your soul. When you get out and even you just see a duck floating in a little creek, or you just see a little piece of nature, and it just, it feels good. And so that's what I think I like about this. As Mr. Jones said, it does have that passive recreation component to it. There's not a lot of real active recreation on this. You know, you can go out, throw a frisbee or whatever, or the kid place space area. But, you know, it's a place to have a picnic, or go sit under a tree and read a book, or just go out and see the wildlife that's there. And so that's why I think I would tend to disagree, because, one, we will take mosquito abatement seriously, but that water adds a whole nother level of the biodynamic of the land and the whole ecosystem that it creates for, you know, the birds, if they're, you know, talked about the cranes coming, cranes are a predatory bird. If they don't have fish to feed on, they're not going to come inhabit that waterway. So I think overall, the experience will be So I think overall the experience will be heightened by having water there. That being said, as I said, I got sticker shock here, Alvin, so you've got to figure out what we're going to do. I don't know if it's changing material, I don't know if we've got to nix the boardwalk or so what, but, you know, just, that's an awful big price tag to pay. It's worth it, again, because I think it plays long dividends, but gosh, that's tough to justify to people who are getting their fillings jarred from potholes, so. That's it, but other than that, I approve the concept.
I agree with Councilman Hume, it's going to be a really special place. I too like the water concept, I appreciate the concerns about that, it's definitely valid and we'll work on that. I just think that the water just adds a calming feature as well. I think between that and what we have planned with the senior center, community center, Veterans Hall and the Aquatic Center to the north, the commons area, we're going to see a lot of activity. I mean, I think a lot of folks, young and old and the like, are going to enjoy this space. I like the word, you have the solar ray location on that design, so I'm okay with it there. I would just say to Councilman Hume's point, there is value in what we're doing, but it is expensive. So if perhaps, I don't know, if you would entertain, I propose maybe like a phasing. And for me personally, I think if you phase, I would want, I think the water and maybe some trails would be the first things we do and then let, it'll let the biology establish itself and the wildlife and things, then we can add things more later on. So it doesn't necessarily reduce the cost, but at least it delays it over time, so.
Go ahead, Councilman Detrick.
So Jason, is the funding mechanism from the Melrose for that, for Laguna Ridge specific plan?
Actually, we're looking at it right now, there's several different potential funding sources. We have Laguna Ridge CFD, that's one of the main funding sources for it, there's a Laguna Ridge Park fee that's only for Civic Center as well as some debt service on Bartholomew. We received notification recently of a $3 million grant that the city is set to receive. We need the approval from the National Park Service on that, but it's looking positive, so we'll continue to look at grant opportunities. So we're trying to cobble together as much money as we can get. There could be a general fund contribution, there could be a variety of other types of things, we're still pursuing other grants, and so the hope is we can get that number as high as we can get so we can build as much of it as we can early on.
What do we have in the cobbling so far?
So I think we have about like $7 million, that's now. The finance department is kind of looking at other funding sources that'll be coming in between now and next year when we hope to go out to bid and potentially be under construction and other funding sources. So the plan right now is to come back to you later this year with potential phasing options, funding strategies, ways of making this happen. And so we're not really prepared tonight to go into details of that, but we're actively working on that plan so we can have more details back to you.
Because I agree, the potential financially to fund it in phases, but the other problem is the expense usually goes up when you phase it. Because you're on and off again with your contractors and if they can, you know, if they compare it all together, it drives the cost down, but I understand the phasing on the financial side for sure.
Well, we're separate elements maybe, right, too. Yeah, you have a good point too, that you're right, if, maybe there's a way we could separate elements, so you're not losing that economy scale.
You've got to plant a couple more money trees this year.
Put those in here, let's put some.
Yeah, we'll have some options for you guys to look at when we come back. One is if we wanted to build it all, how would we afford that, how would we fund that? If we want to look at phasing it, what are those elements that make sense to do early on, to get the economies of scale, which things make more sense to defer to a later date, so that'll all be part of that analysis.
And then as far as actually the project, you know, Councilman Hume mentioned that, you know, sitting watching ducks and wildlife in the water, water adds a huge, huge element. Most, you know, I live on the water, so I mean, sometimes my favorite thing to do is either in the morning or evening, just sit and watch the wildlife. And I think is, the wildlife you see there today, I think it'll be compounded because, as you mentioned, you're creating a whole system, you know, the coyotes will be there because there'll be more food, you'll have possum, you'll have raccoons, you'll have the wild turkeys, the ducks, the geese. We do get actually some, the cranes come into our lake, so that may be a possibility we get some cranes in there too. So it's a, it's a unique environment and you mentioned Golden Gate Park, I mean, I grew up not far from there, so used to spend, I mean, that's a phenomenal park and it's huge, but by comparison, but you're right, you're creating something that is special and unique and this now can be one of the items that can kind of be Elk Grove's, one of the trademark items. So, no, love it, thank you.
Okay, good deal. Anything else?
Do we need to actually, I guess I'll make the motion for the SEQA and the design concept.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close, extension, next item.
Take us on to item 10.3, which consider a resolution approving proposed position reclassification in support of the strategic planning and innovation initiative.
All right, been a long night, but it's been, I think, a really good meeting. It's been interesting kind of listening to the debate discussion. Some of the words I've heard from members of the city council, members of the public are things that we aspire to be and I think we already are to a certain degree. Things like innovative, I've heard that, I've heard thinking outside the box, I've heard leaders providing leadership on a variety of opportunities, then like ranch being one, kind of the net zero concept that we're developing on Civic Center, other kinds of amenities. I think the city of Elk Grove has been, has been a leader and is doing some great things in regard to innovation and kind of strategic planning. But based on direction from the city council, I think that there's more that we can do and as an organization, there's always room for improvement. That's one of, I think, the outstanding goals from our city council. I wanted to just bring this up, this is something that the council implemented and adopted last year as part of its strategic planning, visioning, goal-setting process, and that's to continue to elevate the city's high operational performance using innovation to achieve new levels of organizational excellence and the highest service levels while also providing regional leadership through collaboration. And so how do we do that as an organization? It's done a lot of different ways and I think we're doing a lot of that on a regular basis. The proposal before you tonight is to kind of take, continue to take the city to the next level and look at ways that we can take staff resources, better utilize them in order to achieve council's goal and vision of what the city can become and achieve. And so the main things around here is trying to do it in a fiscally responsible manner. One of the things that we kind of discussed internally is, okay, how do we dedicate resources? Staff is already busy, how do we kind of make this work? And so by kind of strategically realigning some positions, we can do it in a cost-effective way without adding a bunch of new positions to make this happen. I feel like it's something that we can do that will pay big dividends as an investment in the city's future. So the two main parts of this are to reclassify two existing positions. One is our assistant to the city manager and create a director of strategic planning innovation position. The second position that we, part of this office of strategic planning and innovation would be a strategic planning innovation program manager. And those two would not be isolated positions, they would be part and lead a team effort that would create a culture within the organization that is forward-looking, is innovative, embraces new ideas and thoughts and concepts, and so that they would work together to inspire and lead and direct the effort for the city. So the purpose and the scope of this office of strategic planning innovation are to create greater organizational capacity, to focus on forward-looking, strategic and innovative initiatives and solutions, to better align council goals with organizational resources to create a vibrant, inclusive, attractive and sustainable community, to bring greater efficiency to government, to cut the red tape and reduce bureaucracy, ultimately to save the taxpayers money, improve collaboration with outside agencies and regional and national organizations. One of the things we've been looking at is joining some of these organizations out there that focus on innovation and government. There's the Alliance for Innovation that we'll be joining shortly, there's also an organization that was founded in the last couple of years out of the city of San Francisco called City Innovate, and so we're looking to join those and kind of be part of that dialogue that's going on, not only in the state of California, but nationally. So the office will focus on, in three key areas, kind of strategic initiatives, those are the highest priorities to the city council right now, things such as economic development, transportation, other kind of forward-looking items, they wouldn't be necessarily leading these efforts, but they would be supporting them, working closely with our other departments to make sure that those stay as high priorities and the resources necessary to move those forward are dedicated to such. Also continue to work on long-range planning, have more resources to focus more on forward-looking, futuristic kind of things, so we're planning, doing smart growth principles, making sure we're growing in the right way, we're putting plans in place that we're doing the things that are going to look after not only what Elk Grove looks like now, but for future generations. So general plan, master plan, other kind of physical development of the city, including these smart growth principles, topics like resiliency that we've talked about in the past, we just got a $300,000 grant to do a resiliency plan, so this office would manage that process going over the next year or two. Also topics such as sustainability, something that we have worked on, but we can do more in that effort, this net zero concept of our Civic Center is a great step forward in that regard. Kind of other topics that look at future social, environmental, technological changes that the city needs to be on top of, aware of, and start strategic planning for so we can take advantage of those opportunities in the future. And finally, innovation, the idea of kind of exploring the use of new technologies, looking at what's happening in the private sector, looking at what's happening in other cities across the country that we can take advantage of that might make sense for us here in the city of Elk Grove, proving efficiencies, looking at our processes, procedures, ways of doing business. We talked about development services earlier, about ways that we can, our goal is to get people through the process as quickly as we can and as efficiently as we can, and so looking at ways that we can do that, right? Streamlining those processes, looking at kind of online services and programs that get people through the door, get their services provided in the most cost-effective way that we can. So having a team that can look at these items on a proactive basis will pay dividends for the city going forward. And so one of the thoughts is to kind of create a cross-departmental innovation team that would be led by this office, but you'd have representatives in every single department, so it's not just this small little group, you're involving and inviting the entire organization to participate and you get the thoughts and ideas starting to flow, it becomes part of who you are and what you do as an organization.
Breaking the silos down.
Breaking the silos down, exactly. So we're really excited about this, the potential for this new office, it's proposed to be created, we've already started some dialogues about how we can embrace this as an organization. Again, the fiscal impact here, there's no new positions that are being added or requested by city staff at this time, does involve reclassification of two existing positions that will cost the city approximately $44,000 in fiscal year 2018-19. There's no budget amendment necessary at this time, it'll take some while to fill the vacant position, we'll get some savings there and some other things, we think we can absorb those costs within the existing approved budget for fiscal year 18-19, to the extent that we can't, we come back and make any adjustments necessary as part of mid-year. So the recommendation is that council adopt the resolution approving the proposed position reclassifications in support of the strategic planning and innovation initiative. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Jason. I like the presentation, I love this charge, I'm really passionate about strategy and innovation, so I'm glad to see you doing this and do it without adding staff, I think a lot of my colleagues would agree with that. Breaking down the barriers, as was said earlier with Councilman Detrick, you know, so you're matrixing in people, I think that's a great idea. Question, maybe give a little more clarity on how this would work, so maybe somebody gets a new project and, you know, I'm as guilty as any of us up here, we always got great, you know, new ideas, so a new project come in, someone brings it up, do a project charter, project management plan, identify resources, find people within the organization that maybe are light and they can work on it, what's your, how would you see this play out?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're still working through the exact mechanics of how that's going to work, but I think what you're talking about is very similar to what we've talked about is, is an idea comes in, we're creating kind of an online portal right now that would allow staff members that would submit ideas and concepts, hey, can we break this silo down, can we change this policy, here's a new idea that I saw, I just got back from a conference, they would kind of be vetted among this internal group to say, okay, yeah, this is a great idea, let's explore it some more. We've learned a lot through this Bloomberg process where we've had these teams of some of our staff that have worked with these consultants about how that works and some of the brainstorming that goes on, and so we've learned some lessons from that that we can apply to this next phase of the city taking ownership of its own process and kind of do some mini Bloomberg's of our own, where we solicit ideas, get them into the mixer, and then we start working on them, developing them through, so. Still a work in progress, but I think we have a pretty good framework of how we want it to work.
Beautiful, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilman Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. So Jason, much like the last item, on this item, I think I really love the concept, but it's the sticker price that is putting me in a little bit of state of shock. And first of all, Christopher, I'm going to talk about you in the third person a little bit, even though you're sitting in the room, which is weird, but I can wrap my head around the reclassification of that position for a couple of reasons. One, because as the vice mayor just said, I think that what you're trying to do here with innovation, with strategic planning, makes a lot of sense. Moreover, I think that Christopher is an asset to the organization and the idea to be able to move him up into greater roles of greater responsibility is a good one. That being said, I look at the pay range of the new classification and it just kind of blows my hair back a little bit, but then I look at the other, the other position and that pay scale, you know, that goes up north of $100,000 with no supervisory responsibility, I mean, I just, that seems a little out of whack for me.
So maybe I can put it in context a little bit. Anytime we make position changes like this, we take a look at our existing salaries, our existing positions and try to match those positions up with existing positions. And so one of the positions that we felt this new strategic planning and innovation program manager position was similar to was our economic development program manager, that's under our director, so it's one step down with no supervision, but manages a great deal of kind of projects and programs and responsibilities, and we pegged this position to be aligned exactly with that position. And so we kind of look at, you know, where it fits within the organization based on responsibility and the priority we place on that position, and this is going to be a very, I think, a high-level, you know, a project, position that's going to focus on these real priorities. It also, I think, sends a message to the organization of the value we place on the position. I think finally what I would say is you pay for, you get what you pay for, and so if we want to recruit a real high-quality individual that maybe is doing this kind of stuff in another organization or just comes, you know, with credentials that we really want, you need to pay for that kind of individual to come. And so by paying that salary at a competitive level, it'll make us more competitive in the marketplace, be able to go out and maybe get somebody to come in here and really hit the ground running in that position. So we placed high value on it and we want to compensate accordingly.
Okay. Well, I mean, the only reason why I could go along with it is, as was mentioned, that it's a reclassification of existing positions and not adding to the overall payroll. But even at that, I mean, that's a lot of money.
Councilman Detrick?
So I think I have a pretty good guess on one position. Is it open to who you're planning on both of these positions yet?
So the director position, the plan is to reclassify the assistant to the city manager position, which is currently occupied by Christopher Jordan, so he would assume that position. The other position would be open to everybody. So internal, external, we're going to go out and we're going to find the best candidate for that position. That's the plan. And to your comment, I, we're always looking at costs of things, Councilmember Hume, but we feel like if we staff it right, we get the right people in there, this can be a real opportunity for cost savings in the long run for the city by really having some success here and getting the right people in there, we think it'll pay dividends for the taxpayers and the community over time.
Jason, prior to this, I've always thought, or I've always had a feeling that the economic development kind of filled in the gap along these lines. And, you know, when you share this with me, I was excited, being that I just returned from the mayor's conference and almost every city that was cutting edge had a innovative, you know, person that was looking at different ideas and different concepts in which the cities can adopt. So, you know, granted that it is costly, but I think it's worth it because I'm looking long-term. Want to move the city to the next level, I think this is real important to make sure that we have somebody who are looking at the book that we talked about, the numerous green projects that are happening around the nation that I would love this person to take a look at.
We'll be in the next edition of that book.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping, so, yeah. No, I'm good with it. Yeah. You guys ready?
I just have one other comment. You know, Jason, I'm really impressed with the enthusiasm that you're coming forward with outside-of-the-box ideas and, you know, breaking down the silos and bringing everybody together to be an integral part of the entire team and not just their organization. So, I commend you for whatever it's been, a couple of months now, or I don't even know it's been that long yet, but you're really, you've taken the reins of this horse and you've been, you've been running full speed ever since. I love it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Excellent. All right. Thank you.
Make a motion, adopt the resolution?
Let's go ahead and open for public comments. Seeing that no members of the public signed it to speak, let's go ahead and close it and we have a motion.
Motion.
Got a second? All in favor? Aye. Close, abstention? All right. That is it. I believe let's adjourn at 10:36 PM.